Great, welcome everyone. All right, great, welcome. Tonight is our regular city council meeting. It's Tuesday, April 12, 2016. For the record, we are at the Veterans Memorial Hall. Meeting is starting at 6:00 PM and we're located at 209 Surf Street here in Morro Bay. For the record, all council members are present. We do have a quorum and we'll call the meeting to order. And if you'll please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And our next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. And I was asking John and Cindy to come up and lead us in the pledge.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, John and Cindy. And we have a closed session report. And we have no reportable items for a closed session report. Mr. Peroni?
That is correct, okay. And with that, we'll move on to mayor and council members' reports and announcements. And I'll go through a couple to start off with. We did receive a planning award by the American Planning Association. This award was awarded for the Morro Bay Community Sustainability Plan, a plan that was performed in 2014. We're hopeful that we'll get a presentation on this, perhaps in the next couple of council meetings, perhaps next meeting, that'll explain a little bit more about the Morro Bay Community Sustainability Program. This council and community has seen that. But we'll also get a brief on the impacts of this award. This is a small town and rural planning, which is called STAR Division Awards. And so we'll learn more about that in the upcoming meetings, but more to come on that. And then just wanted to give a shout out to our public safety officers as far as the rock rescue that took place. That was pretty sketchy and we had a great organization between Fire Harbor, Highway Patrol, and Coast Guard. I think we're all involved in that. For those of you who watched the news on that, that was pretty sketchy, but that was well done. And then I have one announcement that I'd like to share with council and our community members. I want to inform you that, I'm gonna go ahead and read this. I want to inform you that a complaint has been filed against me with the Fair Political Practices Commission. This body oversees the regulation of open government laws, including Political Reform Act. The complaint alleges that I violated Political Reform Act financial disclosures requirements and that I used my position to influence staff and/or council to make modifications to the secondary unit ordinance 601 for personal gain. I believe strongly in open government and transparency and I'm committed to upholding the rules and regulations and laws. I'm cooperating fully with the FPPC and I look forward to any outcome. And that concludes my announcements. Matt? Christine?
Hi, good evening, everyone. It occurred to me that there are a lot of things happening simultaneously in the city of Morro Bay. So instead of making one announcement after another after another, I would just encourage you all, when you have some time, to check the city's Facebook page and especially go to the hot topics area. A lot of people will want to know what's happening with code enforcement, what's happening with the water reclamation facility, what's happening with the AmGen Tour of California race. So a lot of things are coming up the next month, the next two months. So please take the time, if you're interested, to check that out as your first source of news. And then if you'd like further information or you want to get detailed, feel free to reach out to any of us on the council or directly with staff or both. So much going on, but I also think it's a great time to think about ways to get involved. And if you'd like to, an easy way is to volunteer for the Tour of California. So that'll be coming through our town on May 18, which is a Wednesday morning. So if you have a little bit of extra time to give to help that tour be a success in Morro Bay, we'd love to have you. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a public health announcement and this is quite serious. We are inundated across this country with substance abuse. It's a huge issue. And recently, in the Sacramento area, look-alike drugs that looked similar to street Vicodin, which looked just like a regular Vicodin tablet, were actually illicitly filled with a drug called Fentanyl, which is about 100 times as powerful as morphine sulfate. And there were nine, now 10 deaths as a result of that. And so I'm just giving a shout out and a warning, not to you directly here, because I know most of you don't buy your drugs on the street. But there's an issue out there with stuff that looks like the real thing and it's deadly. You just do not know what's in there. I've never heard or seen a Fentanyl being actually put into a street drug and it is quite lethal. So it's moving this way, it's rampant, and I just caution you to just help communicate with your friends, especially talk to your kids and grandkids about it. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Noah? None? And with that, we'll move on to public presentations. We have Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce Quarterly Presentation and we have two proclamations. I'd like to start with the two proclamations. I could meet the folks. We have Teresa Mortilla and we have Jen Krebs and Kayla Bonado, pardon me for if I hacked your name on that. But the two proclamations, we have a proclamation for, a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay declaring April 2016 a Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And we have a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay declaring April 2016 Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month. And if I can, if you can join me at the podium, I'll meet you down there. Okay, folks, I'm gonna start with the Sexual Assault Awareness Month proclamation first. Teresa Mortilla's here to receive this. And if you just allow me, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in San Luis Obispo County. And whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community and statistics show that one in five women and one in 71 men will be raped at some point in their lives. And whereas child abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before the age 18. And youth ages 12 and 17 are two and a half times as likely to be victims of sexual assault violence. And whereas on campus, one in five women and one in 16 men are sexually assaulted during the time in college. And whereas last year, RISE received 1,171 crisis calls from members of our community and sent advocates on average of once a week to accompany sexual assault survivors at SART, medical exams, law enforcement interviews, et cetera. And whereas the number of RISE clients receiving counseling for sexual assault-related issues rose 31% over the last three years, with 374 community members receiving counseling through RISE in 2015. And the demand for therapy began, being so high that the waitlist was closed multiple times. And whereas we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence, prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking against harmful attitudes and actions. And whereas the City of Morro Bay strongly supports the efforts of RISE and acknowledges that prevention is possible when everyone gets involved. The first step is increasing education, awareness, and community involvement because it is time for all of us to take action to create safer environment for all residents of Morro Bay. Now therefore be it resolved that the Morro Bay City Council does hereby proclaim April 2016 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Morro Bay. And it's an honor to be able to present this to you. Can I give you this and then give theirs and then have you say a few words?
Yes, certainly.
So this is the Sexual Awareness Month?
Ah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'll read the other one and then you can say a few minutes? Okay, thank you. Thank you, folks. And all right, thank you. It's really, it's a privilege, so thank you for allowing me to do this. This proclamation is City of Morro Bay declaring April 2016 Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas the Morro Bay City Council recognizes that every moment in a child's life is an opportunity for that child to learn that the quality of these experiences may determine whether a child succeeds in school and in life, and that all children need caring and loving adults in their lives. And whereas April, Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month, mark a time to recognize that our community's children are precious assets, that the quality of their early years is our collective responsibility, and that we commit ourselves to ensuring that each and every child experiences a high-quality, early environment at home, at childcare, at school, and in the community that will promote the optimal development. And whereas Friday, April 8, 2016, has been named a countywide Wear Blue Day to raise awareness about the many children in our midst who suffer daily from abuse and neglect and to pledge support for strategies that strengthen families and protect our young ones. And whereas Saturday, excuse me, and whereas a variety of other events honoring Month of the Child will provide an opportunity to acknowledge the dedication of individuals and organizations to improve the lives of children and youth in our county, including the Sixth Annual Celebration of Hands-on Heroes in Early Childhood and Champions of Youth, and raise the awareness of the community, employers, and elected officials to the need to improve quality, availability, and accessibility of such programs. Whereas in this caring and connected county, we will, including and beyond the Month of the Child, continue to dedicate our efforts and our resources to investing in our community's future by investing in and supporting our community's children and youth. And may we remember to listen to and watch the children around us, to have patience, to allow them the opportunity to enjoy the journey of childhood, as exemplified in the San Luis Obispo County Children's Bill of Rights. Now therefore be it resolved that the Morro Bay City Council is proclaiming April 2016 as the Month of the Child, Child Abuse Prevention Month, and April 9, 2016, as Day of the Child. So on behalf of the city, it's an honor to be able to present this to you guys.
Thank you so much.
And if you'd take a few moments and say a few words, if you'd lead off, please? Thank you. And I'll put this right here for you.
Put this right here?
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you Mayor Irons and the council. My name is Teresa Mortola and I am the Clinical Director of RISE. RISE is a nonprofit that serves survivors of sexual and intimate partner violence and also their loved ones. While we provide some domestic violence services to the North County, we are the only agency serving sexual assault or abuse and their families in the entire county of San Luis Obispo. Last year, RISE helped 400 women, men, and children who have been affected by sexual assault or abuse. We also provided education services and self-defense classes to hundreds in our community in an effort to prevent this crime from happening in the first place. Our vision is to create a world free of sexual violence. That means that we have to be aware and we have to take action. We are inviting the county residents to help us raise awareness and fund our attending Walk a Mile in Her Shoes. It is an international men's march to end rape, sexual assault, and gender violence, where men show their support for the movement by literally walking a mile in women's high heel shoes. And we do get all different sized high heel shoes. And preferably red. This year will be our third annual event in Paso Robles at the downtown city park on Saturday, April 16. And this is the 14th annual event in San Luis Obispo at Mission Plaza on Saturday, April 30. Both events feature live music, a brief program, and awareness fair, and one-mile walk through downtown. So please check our website at walkamileslow.org for details and registration information and your own pair of red high heel shoes. Lastly, I would like to thank and acknowledge our staff and our volunteers and board of directors for all of the hard work that they do in an effort to end sexual violence in our community. But most importantly, Sexual Assault Awareness Month is about honoring the victims, whether they told their story or not. So thank you for joining us in raising awareness and destroying myths that make it difficult for survivors to talk about their experiences. Thank you again for this proclamation and we hope to see you at Walk a Mile in Her Shoes. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for having us out here. Kayla and I are here representing our Slow County Child Care Planning Council. And we just wanted to say thank you to the City of Morro Bay for joining us and ensuring that our kids are of the highest priority in our community and for your guys' support of Month of the Child. So, we have some goodies for you guys.
Thank you.
Teresa Mortilla from RISE Counseling, thank you for coming out. And Jen Krebs and Caleb Bonado, I'm sorry if I hacked your name. I also wanted to say thank you for coming out and doing what you do. Thank you. Every time we get different proclamations like that and reading them publicly as we did, gives us a moment to really take in what the meaning and purpose of that is. So I just wanted to say thanks again for that. And it's great to be able to have proclamations remind us all of things that are going on in our lives. And with that, that concludes this portion of our public presentations and we'll move on to Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce Quarterly Presentation. If our chamber, okay. Cindy, you were gonna lead off? Thank you.
I'm gonna start, yeah. Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. My name is Cindy Edwards. I'm proud to say I'm a business owner, resident, and the Chair of the Board of the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce. Our first quarter really was about reorganizing in-house, building and rebuilding relationships within the business community, and coming together as a board with a unified and clear vision. Our vision is to help ensure the Morro Bay business community thrives. We saw early on that in order to do this, we needed to look outside ourselves, to our neighbors and beyond, in order to learn what a strong chamber can do, not only for its members, but for its community. There must be a more collaborative effort on behalf of everyone with a stake in the economic stability, let alone the growth of our city. Businesses are expecting more from us. They are asking that we respond to their needs and their concerns. And as I stand here tonight, I want to say to all of the business owners in our community that we are here and we are listening. Six out of the current nine board members are business owners in Morro Bay. We know how tough times can be. We collectively continue and will continue to encourage and support the entrepreneurial spirit of our city by connecting business community with the resources, education, and information they need to be successful. I'd like to leave you with this and please remember it. A thriving business community equals a thriving city. I'd like to turn it over to our CEO, who we really do believe encompasses our vision, Erica Crawford.
Thank you, Cindy. And I'm conscious of time. I prepared a little slideshow for us.
You're great, Erica.
Can we hear us?
You're great, thank you.
Okay, here we go. So, this is my board of directors. I'm very proud of this photo. This was taken from our retreat in January. I was about nine days on the job. This is the lineup. And you can see here, these are kind of what we're looking at. We have an executive committee, we have a membership development, kind of a focus, and a community outreach focus. To piggyback on what Cindy was saying, what is the role of a modern chamber? You know, it's not so much just about collective advertising anymore, just ribbon cuttings, just this. It's really about reinvigorating, educating, inspiring, motivating our business community and connecting them to resources to reinvigorate business plans, connect to funding, expand, grow. Because we're all in this together. So this is an image that we'll be using in our renewal postcards and this was done by an employee at a thrift store here in Morro Bay. Her name is Jenny Gosnell, she's very talented. What's the baseline? So this business walk is something that's been on the chamber's radar for, I think, well over a year. Mayor Irons, I know that you collaborated with some of our board members to speak with the leadership in Atascadero, both the chamber and the city leadership, about their business walk. We're doing it. So we've got a date set. It's May the 11th. The time is TBD. We'll get that out to you. So the chamber is going to provide incentives to businesses for their participation. The idea behind this walk is that we will get as many businesses as possible to answer four questions with the one goal of really getting down to what is business like in Morro Bay for you? What's it like to be a business owner in Morro Bay for you? This is a collaboration with Cal Poly Senior Thesis students. We're gonna need about 100 volunteers to execute this. We've got 1,400 Morro Bay business licenses narrowed down to two sections. And these students, this is our team, they are seniors in Business Administration and Finance, they are strategizing this, they've been working with Sam Taylor and Chape and Concepts to try and understand the role in the larger project of sort of the economic development push that the city has going. So we are gonna share this information widely with the business community and with Chape and Concepts to contribute to that. So look for more information about this business walk, it's just in its formative stages. Advocacy work in progress. Again, that role of a traditional chamber, advocacy is a big part of that. And the City of Morro Bay admirably is undertaking this huge process of updating the general plan and local coastal plan. And we are hearing from the business community, how long do we have to wait? You know, what are we working on here? Scott, I'm smiling at you, sign ordinance and the business license code. You know, I know that the chamber before I arrived was instrumental in getting the amnesty plan kind of in place and the low-revenue business tax certificate in place. There are still some issues that we're hearing about delivery by vehicle, MAS notices coming through. So we've created some task forces. These are going to be dissolved once these issues are resolved. So we're currently working on them. Some other things that are on our radar but don't have task forces just yet, definitely the vacation rentals, as that relates to sharing economy and the TOT, workforce housing, that's a long, as Sam and I have talked, a long process. Downtown waterfront strategic plan parking. We really want to hear from the business community. Again, what Cindy was saying, we want the voice. The more we know, the better we can do. I'm a chamber executive, I have peers, we're looking at minimum wage increase, I'm in an industry. We work with Slow Chamber executives, Western Association of Chamber executives, I'm going to an academy, I'm gonna learn more and more about my job. But we also have fun, so this is a big point. So we're doing our first cooperative mixer this Friday, three businesses, sharing resources, sharing networking capacity. It's on a Friday, the next ribbon cutting is scheduled toward the end of the month there with the Friends of the Library Store. Of course, avocado margarita festival, this is our 10-year anniversary, this is our new logo, this is our new map. And you'll see right there is our expanded footprint. We're really excited about this. This is more family-friendly, the balloon guy's gonna be there, face painter, it's free. You can go into that ticketed area there, buy your margarita, and come back out and hang out. So you don't necessarily have to pay for entry, although we want you to. It's a $5 ticket. Tickets go on sale in Cinco de Mayo. We're anticipating 7,000 attendees. I think the most important thing about the avocado margarita festival this year is that it's one day. So it's Saturday from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And we are really excited to debut a Friday night event, Taste in the Grove. So we have secured an avocado grove about two miles outside of the city. High-end wine food festival kind of an idea with mixology. It's gonna be pretty great. Small, we're looking forward to selling that out early. We are also, this is me this morning with Morro Bay High School students, graphic design students, we are collaborating with them to rebrand our downtown market. I know I'm going fast. And then our visitor center update. This is our visitor center and our staff, that's Jan, Ed, and Carrie. Your chamber is working for you, business community. Every visitor to the visitor center really is a potential customer. This, restrooms, I don't know how well we can see this, but this is public restrooms and public parking locations, this is a PAMPAC. We're working with Hay Printing to get this accomplished. Every public restroom, whether it's city-maintained or privately maintained and master waterfront leases, is listed here. We're sharing the load. With the busy season coming, we want people, our visitors, to be able to find a restroom and to be able to find a place to park. So this is in production, this is an almost final draft, and this will be out very soon. We're gonna produce about 2,500 of them and scatter them everywhere, so these will be widely available. Some data, all of this will be available, and I do quarterly reports with Sam and send that to council, so my quarter two report, this next report will be coming. But I think the key here is that, yes, the relocation affected our volume of traffic, but trends are consistent. So people are starting to find us month over month, March to February, we are still seeing the increases to traffic to the visitor center. And our lodging, we have a consistent rate of referral between 15 and 16. Our retail shopping rate of referral has increased, recreation that's free has decreased, and our dining referrals have increased. And the staff really wanted me to thank Sam Taylor for updating that Google Map location. It helped our traffic. And Department of Public Works for all the signage, that's really helped as well. So, that concludes, thank you very much.
Erica, thank you very much. And with that, that concludes our public presentations. Thanks for that. And prior to us going on to public comment, I've got six speaker slips for public comment. And we do, we will open up with a business spot, so if you haven't filled out a speaker slip and you want to speak to public comment, that'd be great. And if there's an item later on the agenda that you may not be able to stay for and you want to speak to it at public comment, please fill out a speaker slip and bring it up to us. And with that, the business spot will open for public comment, be Rob Seitz from South Bay Wild. Come on up. Excuse me, I said sites, excuse me.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, first I'd like to say thanks for the opportunity to come in here and talk about our business. And also thanks for the support from the Harbor Department, Planning Department, and City Manager while we were getting our business up and running. Okay, our business is South Bay Wild and we harvest, process, and market seafood sustainably along the central coast. So basically, we're a boat, a small processing facility, a truck, and my family. I catch the fish and one of my sons all the time and two of my sons, if it's summer and he's not in school, catch the fish, then we process it at our facility and then market and distribute in a variety of ways. And those ways are, we do a couple farmer's markets in San Luis County. We do an email list where if you get on there and, we'll send you an email every time I go fishing, and then you can come down to our facility and pick it up when I'm unloading. Three local restaurants have our fish this week, The Dutchman, Giancarlo's, and House of Juju. We sell frozen filets, backpack frozen filets, Sunshine Market has those right now. And there's other locations on our website, San Luis County. And the reason we started doing this, well, most of my career, I've been fishing for 30 years or so, and most of the time, we just deliver the fish and it goes away somewhere, you know? So we thought it would be really nice to be able to meet the people that are eating our fish and this way it stays local. And I had kids that are high school ages that needed jobs. So, and I think, you know, sometimes we have the deckhands work the farmer's markets, and I think that knowing that they might be handing the fish over to the person that's going to be eating it helps them take better care of that stuff, you know? So, it's kind of a win-win. My wife is the brains of the operation. She's back there. I just catch the fish and do most of the talking. I'd like to say, in 30 years of fishing, I've fished out of a lot of waterfronts from Alaska to here. And so, I've seen a lot of waterfronts over the years, and I'd like to say that Morro Bay really has a unique waterfront, in a good way, and we're really proud to be part of it. So, it looks like I didn't use up my three minutes.
No, you're great, Rob.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's great.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah. All right, thank you. So, public comment is open. First up is John Elliott, and following John is Marla Jo Sadowski.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. I want to tell you about an event this Sunday. It's called Toons and Noodles. It's presented by the Morro Bay Lions Club, and it's the second annual event. And 100% of the money goes to support iCare, our community, and for Morro Bay High School scholarships. It's from 4:00 to 7:30 p.m. right here, and it, we're going to have two bands that are going to be performing light beach and surf music. And tickets for adults are 15, and kids are eight, and part of that's donation. Also, there's a million penny drive going on in a lot of the businesses where if you drop your pennies in there, it goes to support these same things. And then, I want to switch to my business, and I want to give a green, eco-friendly update on my barbering business. I recently, about a month and a half ago, installed LED lights from the T-12, T-8, and I installed solar panels more than a year ago, and my power bill dropped from about $60 down to $15. And I'm proud to announce that after changing to LED this month, my power bill was $1, so almost zeroed it out. And if you don't know about my shops, you can go to our website, mikesbarbershop.com and Tiny Mike's Barber Shop. I also put LED in at Tiny Mike's Barber Shop, and we do zero waste. We're one of the first green barber shops. And I want to thank everybody for supporting our business and other businesses that are interested in these practices. I would encourage them to come and talk to me, because some of the things don't cost that much, and you can recoup the fees in a year or less. And I'd be interested in talking to other businesses about doing similar things, and I want to thank the restaurants that are. My phone number at my business, well, I'll give you, my personal cellphone is 702-501-8725. And then, my business in town, Mike's Barber Shop, is 772-9262. And Tiny Mike's in North Morro Bay is 772-9316. I think I kept it in a minute, so thank you. Any questions?
All right, John, thanks. Next is Marla Jo Sadowski, and then Richard Sadowski.
I have a question and perhaps a request. I, at the Harbor Advisory Board, the Harbor Chief, in his report, said that he'd been going through storage boxes and getting rid of things that weren't important or something like that. He also said that he'd been through the boxes four or five times already, and I guess the reason they're doing it is because the city may, in the future, need to digitize, which is a good idea. But in preparation for that, I guess they're purging clutter that's really public records. It's disturbing. It wasn't disturbing when I first heard it, but I went home and I'm thinking about it, and I'm going, what? I'm a retired court reporter, and I'm a professional confidential record management person. And this, the lackadaisical nature of it just does not sound like a public entity's way of, the way we should be doing business. And he said there's 10, about 10 boxes in one place and about 15 boxes in another place. That's only 25 boxes. I generated more than that myself in a year of working. It's not very many boxes. So, I'd like to ask that, and I get an explanation of what's going on, purging records?
We can have a response after public comment.
Okay. And then, I'd really like it to stop. They're going to digitize records. You have historical records, you have memorabilia, you have the business, you have all the dredging. I mean, we have a lot of business that goes on there, and just a person deciding what they think is important and not, is not, it's not the core mission of public record-keeping. So, thank you.
Thank you, Marla. Richard Sadowski, and then Rick Mars, or Morse, I'm sorry.
Richard Sadowski, citizen of Morro Bay. For those of you who haven't seen the film, The Reverent, with Leonardo DiCaprio, I would highly recommend it. And there is a scene in that film where the main character, he has a son that's half Native American. And there's a scene where he tells his son that, for him to be quiet, because the people, the adversaries, don't see him. They don't see him, they don't hear him. And recently, I was talking to my friend Fred Collins, who's a Northern Schumash Tribal Administrator in this area, and we're boasting about our grandsons. One of the things that we kind of, like, when I get the sense of the culture, is he described what happened to the natives here, similar to what happened in Germany and Poland. Now, my dad was in Poland in 1939, and he graduated what was equivalent to like West Point, and most of his classmates were machine-gunned by the Bolsheviks. But he was there fighting while America was still asleep until 1942, but this was in 1939. And so, when I look at one of the things that we're considering here, and we sterilize a discussion about the Schumash Heritage National Marine Sanctuary, which has already gone to the second level in NOAA, and we just sterilize it and remove the culture out of that discussion, that's embarrassing. That's dismissive. These people have so much to offer us about sustainability. The areas that they're talking about are, some of their culture was like 300 feet inland or 600 feet. The rock actually was on land when they were still here. White people only been here for 500 years. They've been here 18,000. And I think that when we, this council, this whole city, to just remove that culture out of the discussion is an embarrassment.
Rick Morse, and then Lauren Hare. I hope I got that right.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the City Council. My name is Rick Morse, and I operate Medmark Clinic at 334 East Olive Avenue in Fresno, California. Almost exactly five years ago, then-city Attorney Rob Schultz invited me to the City of Morro Bay to assist in writing the medical marijuana ordinance for the city. And over the past five years, yeah, it's taken a long time. I've been working on polishing the ordinance. Everybody at the time agreed, including the City Council and the City Attorney's Office, that it was a very good ordinance that just needed polishing. So, I've been working on polishing this ordinance for the last five years, and I think I actually may have something that might work for the City of Morro Bay. If you open the binders that I provided for everybody, the first presentation on top is what I call a hypothetical location. It's located over here on Quintana Avenue. The last month when I appeared before the City Council, I met with some of the property owners and asked them what their opinion was about perhaps renting to a collective, and they said, basically, it's up to the City Council. They would be more than happy to do it. The next tab in the binder is what I call the proposed polished ordinance. The primary difference between this ordinance and the original Morro Bay ordinance is I included provisions at the bottom for edible medication, marijuana cultivation, and delivery services. Those were three things that I recommended to the city attorney at the time that they provide in the ordinance. Beyond that, you'll find the original, the original staff reports, the original ordinance, the non-diversion information, and the police chief's task force information on medical marijuana. When I first opened in the Tower District of Fresno, you could actually see tumbleweeds rolling down the street. This is a literal depiction. Now, you can't find a place to rent on Olive anywhere in the Tower District. Not only are we good for the neighborhood, but we're good for business. Business expansion in the Tower District has increased about 700%. We bring people in from other parts of town just to go shopping in the Tower District, and it's an amazing function of both good for the neighborhood and good for the city. If you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to ask or answer. The information, my contact information is on the front of the binder. I do have, I have sent you emails, so if you would rather contact me by email, sounds good to me, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Appreciate it. Lauren, Lauren Hare? Did I get that right?
Lauren Hare. I've been a resident of Morro Bay for six or seven months now, and I recently received a letter.
Can you, just so the record for the folks reading, that'd be great.
And I'd like to hand you a copy.
Thank, that's perfect. And then, so the rest of the audience and the community can listen, that'd be great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And my reason here is not the subject matter of the letter. I know that trailers have been beat to death around here, and I have solved that issue. My problem is, is the quality of the letter. I get this letter, and it's got grammar errors, misspelled words. I'm, you know, I learned how to write a letter in my freshman year in high school in typing class, which I guess dates me. But I saw this letter, started reading it, and I started shaking my head, and there seems to be no oversight if we put out communications in this manner. And as council and mayor, I, mayor, I think you'd be a little embarrassed to have this letter represent you. I would expect a little bit more professionalism from your employees and their communications. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. We have a copy for our staff. And with that, we have Joe Wallach, Joe Wallach, and then Janice Peters.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, staff. My name's Joe Wallach, City of Morro Bay. Been here about 15 years, business owner, homeowner. And my concern was the letter that, well, the announcement on the high school improvements and pool. The swimming pool was something I advocated 15 years ago when Andrea Luca was here, and she told me it was too expensive at that time. I guess it became more reasonable now, but my concern was the removal of 35 trees on the property, which is basically my property, too. But the school and the City of Morro Bay annexed a significant, significant portion of the property for the high school, which I don't have a problem with that, but I do have a problem with the needless removal of 35 mature 100-year-old trees, if that's the case. I thought that would be something on the agenda tonight that I wanted to address, because that's basically a logging operation. There's no need to take out 35 trees, and just calling them diseased. All the trees are stressed right now because of the drought. People are stressed because of the drought. But with El Nino, we might be able to, you know, take it on an individual basis, but to just go in there and clear-cut 35 mature trees, if that's the case, that's something, you know, that needs to be brought up to the Coastal Commission. And, you know, it's taken a lot further than just, it's kind of like, you know, saying, well, you know, we ought to remove Morro Rock. We'd have a better view if that rock wasn't blocking it. I mean, come on, you know, the rock has got value. And it's like, you know, the city seems to know the value, or they know the cost of everything. They know the price of everything, but they don't know the value of anything. And that's what I'm here to speak to, is the issue of the tree removal, if it's similar to what they did in the state park, if there are diseased trees that need to be taken out one at a time. I used to work in logging and forestry, so I know that it's not the whole forest that has to be taken down. So, let's try and, being that Morro Bay is supposed to be a tree city, let's, let's put our actions where our words are. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Janice Peters, and then Betty Winholtz.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Janice Peters, Morro Bay. I want to talk about Quintana Road speed limits. I've traveled that road often, and I've seen the little flashing lights that say I'm going too fast on that road. Just want to say, I believe, and I'm going way back in my history in city government, that I believe that if there is a place where the common average speed limit is greater than that posted, that it can be changed. And I know we talked about changing Quintana Road's speed limit previously, and it didn't happen, but I did a little survey of my own today. If I don't touch my gas pedal from Dolly's Donuts on, I can't stop going more than 29 or 30 miles an hour unless I ride the brake all the way down the hill. Just a little bit of information. I also checked out, what is the traffic along there? It's a commercial road. There's no parking. There's very few pedestrians. There are, I counted, 30 driveways, all with very easy sightlines. Maybe the little McDonald's or Burger King thing gets a little dicey, but other than that, they all have really good sightlines. You can see people coming in and out of the driveways. A residential street where 25 is a reasonable speed has 30 driveways in one block, and they're going in and out of houses with kids and bikes and everything else. So, I think that we probably don't need to have a 25 mile-hour speed limit on Quintana. I think it would be more practical. I did drive 25 all the way today, and I had people behind me on my tail, like, hurry up. So, I think that if that is a possibility, that increasing the speed limit to 30 or 35, if we are using that little flashing light and recording who's doing things, I would appreciate you considering doing that. It is a commercial road. I don't think it's going to hurt anybody to have the speed a little bit faster on that road. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Betty Winholtz, and David Nelson.
Betty Winholtz, I'm going to speak to C4, because my guess is you will not get to that before 7:30, and I need to leave to go back to work at that point. C4 is regarding the second unit ordinance that's been rewritten, and the controversial part for me is that Planning Commission and planning staff agreed that second units should be used as, should not be used as vacation rentals, and this council chose to take that out at their first reading two weeks ago. And that's why we're here tonight for the second reading. That first reading was done at 11 o'clock at night. The noted change happened within 24 hours before the meeting. Most of us who looked at the agenda read it on Thursday, said, oh, no big deal, and then we don't look at it again. And yet, here it was, and there was a major change in recommendation from the staff to the council, and then the council voted to accept that change. So, there, hopefully, you've received some correspondence about that, and maybe there'll be speakers later this evening about that. My particular comment with regard to that, I've sent you some e-mails, but for the record, I would like to say that allowing second units to be used as vacation rentals defeats the second unit's purpose, that the state of California intentionally and officially carved out them as affordable housing back in 2003. And you know, and you have documentation to that effect. And that law was known as AB 1866. And in order to address the mandate that the state gave to the cities and counties, this this city put into their housing element, policy H-10, in the most recent rendition of the housing element, and program H-10.1. And they say, well, first of all, the intent of AB 1866 in section 65583 says, quote, "Identification of realistic capacity for second units in addressing the locality share of the regional housing need," which is your requirement to fulfill moderate-low and very-low housing. And we have never done that, and we all know that. And the conversion of second units to vacation rentals, or to allow that rather than ban it, will make that worse, in my opinion. And so, in response to that, our housing element says, "The secondary housing units will be used as an affordable housing option throughout the city." Not as option, you can use it for this or that, but an option for affordable housing, meaning that's one of other ways I assume that you're going to do that. And then to comply with that, then the H-10 says that that's how we will do this. To meet our AB 1866 requirement, the city will continue to permit second dwelling units ministerially for residential uses, or residential zones. So I'm hoping the council doesn't feel like they can violate state law.
David Nelson, and then Linda Merrill.
Good evening, David Nelson. We start out Chamber of Commerce. I went on their website today, and the first picture that comes up is a beautiful picture of Yosemite on this side, Morro Bay Rock on this side. Kudos to you guys. But I think you ought to add Monterey and have a triangle, so that you have the whole coast highway from Yosemite up to Big Sur and Monterey. Add that to that, but it looks really nice, and we see Morro Bay on TV all the time. It's not identified, but it's there. So that's good stuff. I concur with the gentleman that has been trying to put in a marijuana dispensary. I've been calling for it. We voted for it. I wish he would stop dragging your feet and just get this done. It sounds like it's pretty well done. I have to agree with Janice Peters on Quintana. 25 is a ridiculous speed for that from Dolly's down. It just doesn't, nobody does it, so why even have it? 30 would be way better. 35, it used to be 40, I believe, and there were no real accidents there. I mean, people, people are pretty smart in Morro Bay. I don't think you give everybody enough credit. I mean, when you're going through a neighborhood, and you can see, you know, every driveway, and there's no people, you're driving down the middle of the road, which isn't right, but it works. So if it works, don't try to fix it. And that's what happened on Quintana. Also, the sewer, I'm really disappointed in sewer. We have a 60-day thinking about it, period, and to this day, we don't have technology. I'm tired of looking at sites. I go to all of the workshops that I can. I've been to most of them. I've been doing this for, since 2003, or it seems, or whatever, and still, we have no, no firm idea of what we're going to buy here. Also, I might add that Bernie Sanders, in one of his campaign speeches, is talking that the federal government should come back into building our sewers. So I hope we can drag our feet until he gets elected president, which would be really nice. Not that I'm endorsing anybody, but, you know, he has some sound ideas, and paying for sewers is a good one. When I moved to Morro Bay, and when I moved here in '79, the government was paying for sewers, and Los Sozos decided they should have no growth rather than sewer, and look where they're at. Once the government starts building these, they're not going to cost us $200 million or $100 million. We're getting gouged, because there's a law over our head. But we need, we need, as citizens, we need to see what you want to build here. You know, I'm tired of listening to all of what is going, could be done. We're spending huge amounts of money on sites that we have no idea what we're going to build. I mean, why are we skipping this? I've asked this a number of times. It seems like a simple request. If I'm totally off-base here, which I don't think I am, I wouldn't build a house without knowing what I was going to build. I wouldn't buy the lot before I bought the house. Thanks.
Thanks, David. Linda Merrill, and then Barbara Dorr.
Good evening, Mayor. Linda Merrill, I'd like to say that I am also concerned with C-4, and I agree with Betty Winholtz, and that's a great concern to me and my neighborhood. Also, I spoke earlier, but I don't know how many people would have been watching that meeting, so I want to repeat about the public restrooms and the new, the new number that we have to call. In the last few weekends, there was a crisis in the cleanliness of our public restrooms with no one to call. Now, we have an after-hours and weekends number to call, 781-0445, to get in touch with the dispatcher, who will contact a city employee. Let the dispatcher know the location of the park, or restroom, or whatever problem you have, and they will get in touch with the city. During business hours, please call 772-6225, or Public Works number, whichever is the best. I'm not sure. And I'm asking citizens of Morro Bay to help improve the quality of our public restrooms for ourselves, for our citizens and our visitors. Nobody will know that this is a mess, that they are a mess, unless somebody out there reports it and helps us keep it up. There's vandalism, there's various reasons that things are in bad condition, and so I'm asking the public to please help to report these problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara, I have two speaker slips, one for consent and one for public comment. Is this for consent, or?
Consent.
Just consent?
Yes.
Okay, let me conclude public comment, and then I'll bring up consent public comment. Thank you. Thanks, Barbara. With that, there are no more speaker slips or public comment.
I have one up there, but I can't stay for C-2. I feel me, I could speak before then.
Come on up. If you can't stay for items later on the agenda, there are speaker slips in the back, but this is public comment. Please come on up.
Sandy Tandler, Morro Bay resident. Last year, I brought you a resolution from the Central Coast Taxpayers Association for Prop 13 regarding businesses. It wasn't allowed on your agenda, so you didn't get to vote for the resolution. But this year, the Central Coast Taxpayers Association wants to make everyone aware of what is going on in Sacramento, and what they want to put on the ballot this year, and it's a called self-help county tax proposal. So one-half-cent sales tax to pay for roads, roads that will cost approximately $135 billion to repair within the next decade. The thing is, this tax for us, so that we can have nice roads, sounds really lovely, except the state has the money to pay for the roads right now. But Governor Brown wants to pay for a bullet train to nowhere, instead of taking care of our roads, which I think is lovely for him, bad for us. And nobody wants the bullet train, and I think that it would be really nice if you all up there on the dais would stand up for us and vote against the governor's plan to yet again tax us more money, so he can have a legacy. Do the right thing for your citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Anybody else for public comment, if you can't stay for an item later on the agenda? We do have speaker slips as well. Following this, I was going to close public comment. Welcome.
Okay. My name is Alice Kolb, and I'm here to speak on an agenda item that I can't stay for.
Okay.
And that's item C-4, the possibility of using secondary dwelling units as vacation rentals. I was a planning commissioner here in the city back in the early 1980s, and we reluctantly allowed secondary units at all. And they were not to be rented, but to be used by extended family members. I realize that times have changed, and these are now often used by people who live here in town, who could not afford to live here if they were not renting a secondary unit. And I don't really have a problem with that, but I agree with the mountain of correspondence that you've received, identifying problems in neighborhoods where secondary units are used regularly as vacation rentals. And I would confer, concur with the problems they've identified, the traffic, the other issues. And so I would really hope that you would not allow secondary units to be used as vacation rentals. Thank you.
Thank you, Alice. And with that, I was going to close public comment and bring it back to council, and I think we have a couple of responses. I just want to make sure that we get a response. There were some, we have a question on whether we're appropriately disposing our records. Dave, if you want to respond, respond to that.
Sure, Mr. Rafferty. Taking notes here, I'll respond to a couple items this afternoon.
Okay, great, thank you.
So first, there was a concern about records management, disposal of records. So just to be very clear, actually, one of our goals or objectives this year is written as records management. It says, "To develop a prioritized budgeted short- and long-term plan for improving records management policies and procedures, including development of a trustworthy electronic record system, and staff education regarding legal requirements and best practices, and to begin digital scanning of Harvard Department records." What records might we be purging? Well, we found that, so the city pays to store records, which is important. We want to keep a good, a good record of our records. We actually identified that since 1983, we've been storing, we've been paying to store staff vacation request slips, copies of staff vacation request slips. So when, when the maintenance guy asks to go on vacation, that's not a record that we need to keep, that's not a record that we want to pay to store for 30 years, and so what we're doing is we're following very clear records management policies in order to identify exactly what we must keep, what we should keep, and then to copy that clearly and to make it accessible. And in fact, last week, we had a professional, a records management professional spend a day with the city, go to each department to start that education process. So I want to assure, assure everybody that we are not throwing away anything that we should be keeping legally, and what we are doing is making, is getting a better system in place, so everybody can access our records. A gentleman had a concern about a letter he received from code enforcement. I agree, we could have done better on the, on the grammar and some of the punctuation in that letter, and we'll strive to do that. Scott will come to you in a minute on schools at the high, or trees at the high school. Janice Peters had a question about speed surveys. It was a great one, so actually, another objective for this year that the city council has adopted is to conduct a speed survey, to update the citywide speed survey to determine the appropriate safe driving speed for all streets. So we will be doing exactly that this year, doing a professional survey of all the streets. That could result in a reduction of speed on some streets. It could result in the increase of the speed limit on other streets, such as Quintana. I'm not going to comment on the secondary unit ordinance items. We'll get to that, and due course. The sewer, the sewer question deserves a quick comment, and that is that we've actually come quite far in the technology question. Based on the facility master planning done to date, we have, we have figured out a number of technologies that we won't use. What we know that we will use is either an SBR or an MBR process, sequencing batch reactor or membrane bioreactor. So, so we've been going perhaps methodically or deliberately, but very carefully through a process, to make sure that we end up with exactly the kind of facility that the city requires, based on the kind of sewage that we require. And so, so while it doesn't appear like we've, so it's true, we haven't selected a final technology. We are down to two, and we're, we are ready to, very close to being ready to decide on which one is right. And finally, roads, I just want to clarify, we're going to talk about streets, the streets tax in a few minutes, but in case anybody was concerned or listening, it is very clear that there is no money coming from the state for local streets. A reserved judgment on whether the money, the state has money or not, but what we know is this year, there is no streets measure that is going to make it through the state assembly and be signed by the governor. And, and the important thing to clarify is that the item on the agenda tonight is not a state one-half-cent tax, it is a county-considered half-cent self-help tax. So I just want to make sure that was clear for anybody that might have been listening and is not going to stay for the later item. Scott, do you want to address?
As part of the, the application, we'll be going before the planning commission, I think, at the next meeting. The pool is agendized. We're completing the, the environmental documents, been completed and routed out for public comment. And there are trees proposed for removal. Some of those trees are damaged at the end, are at the end of their life. The total number, I'm not sure. I'd have to go back and review the application. But again, it's coming up for review at a, at an upcoming planning commission meeting. So if people are concerned about it, they should definitely come out and voice those concerns and review the documentation as we make it available.
We should also just clarify that the, that the exciting pool to be built is not a city pool, per se. It is, it is being built by the, by the school district on school property. The good news is that, that it will have a community component to it. So bottom line is, the city general fund isn't having to pay to build a pool, but our community will have access to the pool, and that's something that we're actively negotiating the hours and times with the school district.
Great. Any other council remarks on that? Great. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda, and I do have one speaker slip for consent, so I'll open up for public comment. Barbara Dorr for consent. If you please come forward. Thanks. Thanks, Barbara.
Barbara Dorr, good evening, all. In the future, I guess I'll just put consent, I mean, public, public comment time. Basically, I came, when I was reading through the agenda, I saw, I believe it's agenda item number A-10 regarding support for Senate Bill 968, and then I just thought, administration, you know, what is this? So then I went to the agenda to see, and it is in support of the economic studies for a potential closure of Diablo Canyon Nuclear Power Plant. And generally, you have a subject, an understandable subject on a summary agenda, so the public knows what you're talking about. And I mean, if you say nuclear power plant, you're going to wake up a lot of people who may think they have a comment or want to comment. So I think that should have been written differently on your agenda, to be in compliance with the Brown Act and inform the public. And then upon reading your letter, the middle paragraph, you talk about Morro Bay and encounter the economic and impacts that we felt, the job losses. And personally, from what I understood, I didn't think we lost many jobs at the power plant itself, and as far as effect on the economy, we knew years in advance that something was going to happen at that site. And anyhow, it just, the middle paragraph in there just seems to be rewritten, and if you're going to put comments in, include the facts also, because they're just sort of broad statements, and it'd be nice to understand what data you're drawing, the economic impact and job loss from. Basically, that was it. But also on the records issue thing regarding harbor, I've gone in the past, a few years back, a number of years back before you guys were here, and I tried to look at some leases. I came to City Hall, they sent me down to the harbor, and they said, "Oh, I don't know if we can let you look at them. We have our notes and our things on the, on the pages. So I don't think you can look at these leases, and yet you have to be able to look at them." So I hope what you discard, possibly you could put in the library, so if people are interested in harbor leases, they can go to the library and research them. And I just, I certainly understand discarding records and not paying for the rental somewhere else, but please save leases so they're easily accessible, full copies for the public. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. And with that, that concludes our public comment for consent. I'll close that and bring it back to council. And appreciate the comments. I would move to pull item A-10. Are there any other items to pull? Seeing none. I might take a motion to approve all items on the agenda except item A-10.
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion by council member heading, a second by council member Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries 5-0. And just wanted to cover a little bit informational on that. Just clarify, A-10. Just clarify, A10, I know we had the public comment on that. If we just go over the subject matter of that, I'm looking for some assistance on a little bit better discussion, so we can just clarify that.
So A10 is, is the council authorizing the mayor to sign this letter that was, that's in the agenda packet, that is in support of a study to determine the economic impact of the Diablo Canyon Nuclear Power Plant to, in the broader San Luis Obispo County. It is, it is not in support or against the power plant, the power plant closure, the power plant extension of its, of its licenses or anything of that. It, it, it advocates support for better understanding what the economic impact of the power plant is, the, the nuclear power plant, and thus what the impacts could be if it were, if, if or when it closes, so we can be, so the county can be better prepared for that. The, the paragraph that was, that was noted, letters like this are usually fairly general. And so it does what it says generally, is that our community has recent experience with the closure of a significant facility like a power plant. In fact, it was one. And thus, and we've seen the effect in the community of the loss of jobs and the loss of tax revenue, which has been substantial for the city, the tax revenue itself in the million-dollar range. And, or tax and other revenues from the power plant. So the, the letter is fairly innocuous unless the, the city does not want to advocate that PG&E essentially be made to pay for an economic impact study on, on the impact of Diablo Canyon to the county.
Okay, great. Thanks for the clarification. I hope that helps. And without any further discussion, I'd move to approve item A10.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Irons, second by council member Smucker. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries five oh. That concludes our consent. Thanks very much. And we'll move on to our business items. First on the, first on the list, item C1 is authorization to add one full-time equivalent city staff member. And we will look for Mr. Buckingham.
Yes, I've got this one, please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm going to go fairly quickly through this. It was well, well-written up, I believe, in the, in the staff report, but do just want to hit some high points here so that we know what we're acting on, and so the audience that's watching knows what we're acting on. So the, the purpose of this is to get council approval to increase the city's full-time equivalent of employees by one from 92.5 to 93.5 in order to recognize the enduring nature of a second planner position in the community development department. The planning department has had, or has a position that requires full-time work, and we assess that position will be required for many years to come. Therefore, staff recommends turning that position into an FTE or a full-time equivalent position. The fiscal impact is, is shown here on the screen. So the total impact on the FY '16, '17 budget is $8,631. The current employee has a salary of about $52,000. The city pays about $13,000 of city-paid contributions toward benefits. So the total impact on the budget of the current employee is around $65,000. This, this authorizes us to go to, to make this an FTE position. And what you see is that the city-paid contributions toward benefits increased by about $8,600. And also shown there is the step scale for this position for, for potential future merit increases. I think it's important for me to take a word here on benefits. So benefits, when talking about public employees, seems to be a dirty word. The passage of the Public Employee Pension Reform Act frankly should change that perception. Private employers must pay about seven and a half percent, 7.62% of employee salaries towards Social Security. And private employees, employers generally provide appropriate health coverage. When we talk about benefits for city employees, public employees, we're talking about exactly the same thing. We're talking about the city providing a contribution toward retirement, just like a private employer is required by law to pay a contribution toward Social Security called the payroll tax, and a city contribution toward healthcare. So the city's required contribution for the major benefits from, for public employees are very similar to the same benefits that private employers must pay. So as we look at that same chart again, what I bolded there is, is the salary for this employee is $52,000 today, and if this is approved, the salary for that employee tomorrow will be $52,000. A couple of legal and regulatory requirements. So the city has a CalPERS exemption that allows full-time work for partial benefit. It is very unusual exemption. We're one of a few cities that have, that have this. For most cities, for somebody that works full-time, we're required to pay a, a full-time benefit. Recent changes to the Affordable Care Act specifically have increased the level of benefits that the city must provide in healthcare. This is, and that more closely matches FTE employees, and that's affecting both public employers and private employers across the nation. An employee who works over 1,000 years, 1,000 hours a year must receive partial health benefits right now, and the city must contribute essentially a Social Security-like contribution to an agency like, called PARs, which is what we use instead of a Social Security contribution. So why not continue to use the full-time partial benefits exemption? Generally, I don't believe that it's appropriate to work and employ full-time but provide and not provide them similar benefits to other full-time employees. It creates a haves and have-nots atmosphere within, within the city workforce, which isn't healthy for the organization, and it can, can appear to be unfair. So essentially, we've got this exemption, which allows us to treat some employees differently than we treat other employees, and I'm not super comfortable with that. Generally, 40-hour-a-week employees working in an enduring position should be treated similarly. And I'm saying this not specifically just for this position, but holistically, the way we treat our, our employees, whether in a private business or in a public, public agency is important. Enduring positions, I've said that a couple times, and I'll say it a few more, those are positions that are known to be long-term, not, not a position that might be sort of transient here just for six months or a year or something. So there's two exceptions that I would provide, areas in which I'm comfortable with the near full-time work but not normal benefits. The one is an employee who is working essentially multiple part-time jobs for the city. So if there's an employee who does 10 hours a week in Department A, 10 hours a week in Department B, 15 hours a week in Department C, they are essentially working three part-time jobs, but they've chosen to do that instead of work a part-time job for the city and a part-time job for, for somebody else. I am, I'm reasonably comfortable treating that employee as a part-time employee. Similarly, employees who are working in non-enduring positions, positions that might be here only for six months or a year and then, and then go away. So in some cases, if the city leadership is unsure if a position will be enduring, it's reasonable to work a full-time employee for a period of time in that position until really determining if that position is enduring. So for example, we've done a, a minor cost-saving restructuring in, in the public works department about six months ago. We had a engineer retire, and we determined instead of rehiring a, an expensive engineer, we were, we hired a less expensive engineering technician. And that has actually saved us some money on payroll, but we want to let that go for about a year and make sure that that's working out for us. That engineering technician can provide some assistance to all of our engineers at a, at a lower cost instead of having a full-time certified engineer doing filing and doing other things that a, that a technician could do. So I'd describe that as a, as a non-enduring position until we're sure that that, that organization is going to work for the city, and at that point, that would become an enduring position. The organization in the community development department, historically, community development was part of public works. A number of years ago, community development had six employees in community development, four planners and two admin. During a pretty significant downsizing in 2005, that was cut from six to two. Up until two years ago, as you all, I think, are well aware, the planning department was underperforming in large part due to being undermanned. There was a huge backlog in building permits and planning actions and those things. And in fact, this council approved hiring three contract planners about 18 months ago in order to have a more efficient planning department so people get what they pay for because they're paying for that service when they go for a building permit or a coastal development permit. The, I just mentioned that you directed the hiring of three contract planners, and that, that significantly improved the city's planning efforts. Continuing on with the organization, so the, the community development manager, Scott Graham and I, both assess that at least one of those three contract planner positions that, that you approved, at least one of those is going to be required as an enduring position in the city for years to come. We've got the general plan, local coastal plan, potential redevelopment of 26 acres of the existing wastewater treatment plant, revitalization projects on the Embarcadero in downtown, potential redevelopment of the Morro Bay Power Plant. There is a significant amount of work to do. What we found is when we only had two planners two years ago, we weren't getting the work done. We hired these contract planners. We are getting the work done. We are going to need two planners. So the future organization is to have a community development manager slash director, that's Mr. Graham, and then two full-time assistant or associate planners, and then to fill in the gaps with either part-time or contract planners. So I recommend that the council approve this action by approving the motion that's on the screen. I'll read it for the record. Approval of an increase in the city's full-time equivalent staff by one from 92 and a half to 93 and a half to immediately convert a 40-hour, full-time, partial benefits position to an FTE position. And retain the employee who has been filling that position, actually for 20 months, that's on, misprint on the screen. The employee has been there for 20 months at the end of this month. And to convert the position to a full-time assistant or associate planner. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. I have no speaker slips for this item. Seeing, okay, great, thanks. With that, no speaker slips. Questions from council? Noah? John? Matt? Christine?
Christine? I just wanted to say that I did specifically ask the city manager about specific dollar amount. I think that it's hard for us to really know, $8,000, but in regard to what. And I think that the, the slide that talks about exactly how much salary and everything is, is a helpful fact for us to have. Thanks. So that's, that was my question, but it was answered earlier today. Thanks.
Thanks. And I just have one question. We opened up for discussion. Appreciate the staff report and the detail and the explanation of all that. Earlier with our advisory boards, we were talking about our budget planning and our budget forecasting tool that we've been using. So we're encouraging our advisory boards to take a look at our, our budget forecast. And I just want to just take a moment and just real quick question. You know, obviously, this wouldn't be a staff recommendation unless we had pretty much identified the workload that we have within the department, the need for service, and the budget forecasting tool really identifies that particular department and, pardon me, and, and the need for this, this particular individual position, let's say. So does, was that, was our budgeting tool also informative in making this, this recommendation for council?
It was informative in understanding that we certainly have the capacity, the fiscal capacity to, to make this, this quite minor increase. The main tool, the main issue is that we understood what our workload was. We also had some management partners' assessment of that perhaps we were actually light in that area. But, so I wouldn't say that the, the budget forecast was, it's most important part in this was to allow us to see what our budget looks like for the, the coming decade and to know that this, this decision is financially supportable.
Great. That's all I had. And with that, since we don't have any public comment with that, I'll, we can start off for, for discussion and deliberation. Any discussion, am I right? Pardon me.
Yeah, I'll just briefly say that I, I think we have talked quite a bit about how important the planning division is at this point, knowing all the big challenges that we have with the general plan update and so forth, some of the things that were mentioned in the staff report, and then working through some of the backlog in the planning department that had built up, and, and just providing a professional and clear processing effort there. We've seen great improvements recently. To me, this is a cost of doing business type expense that is actually going to help us hopefully continue to retain good planners, which is, is really important, and I'm support.
Thank you. Noah, John?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Buckingham, for the presentation. Very clear, concise. I too agree with everything that Mr. Smucker said. I would ask that we take a look at the exemption that we have and possibly get a greater understanding of how long that might be able to continue and if there were any legal issues that we might face in the future with regard to that. That's, that's one concern that I have. And secondarily, just to piggyback on what the mayor said, I do think the planning tool that we do have could be very helpful in scenario planning to look at if you had to add so many FTEs that were benefited, what the financial impact would be in the future of doing that, because it would put in all the detailed data associated with that according to the PERS program. So, good question, and I think it's an excellent program for that. I'm fully supportive of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
No, I appreciate, Dave, you doing this and talking about with, with Scott, looking at management partners and looking at what we're doing as a city and building a more, you know, friendly environment where people want to come and feel that the business community and planning and building is consistent. So doing this in terms of the workload that I know you've talked about, Scott, I think this is a good idea.
Great. Christine?
When I first became on the council three years ago, we frequently heard complaints about the timing of pacing of things, projects through the process in the planning department. And I just simply don't hear the amount of criticism I heard before. So increasing the number of planners is key. Keeping that planner number is also important as we move through gigantic processes that have already been mentioned about the general plan update. I also just want to say that I, I don't believe it is appropriate to work employees full-time without benefits. And I would agree with council member Heading that we really need to take a look at that overall moving forward. But I would support this tonight.
Great, thank you. I too would support the staff recommendation. All the comments have commented basically the service and kind of the investment in that particular department, the workload and the products and projects that are going through there. So I'm in support of this as well. And with that, I would entertain a motion.
I would move the approval of an increase in the city's FTE by one from 92.5 to 93.5 to immediately convert the 40-hour, full-time, partial benefits position to an FTE position and retain the employee who has been filling that position for approximately 20 months, and convert the position to a full-time assistant planner.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Heading, second by Mr. Smucker. Any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries five oh. And with that, that moves us on to item C2, review and direction for San Luis Obispo Council of Governments, SLOCOG Self-Help Transportation Funding Initiative. And I'd just like to extend a welcome to our SLOCOG staff and members and colleagues. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you, Mayor Irons and council members. It's really a pleasure to be here today. I wanted to give you a little bit of perspective of what our agency and our recent efforts to explore being a self-help county. So we'll have a presentation in a second. First off, in terms of our agency, we're independent from the county. We have our independent staff. We have our own budget. We have our own governing board. It consists of five members of the county board supervisors and an elected official from each of the seven cities. Mayor Jamie Irons represents the city of Morro Bay on SLOCOG. SLOCOG basically is a transportation planning and programming agency. We facilitate transportation improvements countywide. We also program- We also program state and federal funds throughout our region. The city of Morro Bay has been able to obtain a number of improvements. Your Class II bike lanes on Main Street, on South Bay Boulevard, the roundabout at Quintana, the Harbor Walk that's in existence now that's been received very, very favorable public input. So this is the kinds of projects we've had. If we can go to the next slide. There we go.
Thank you, Ron. I'm going to do a brief introduction.
Oh, there we go. I was waiting for you initially to do that. Then I thought I'd just jump in. Okay, go fire.
And then Ron's going to take it from there. Why do we need this measure, which will provide a little over $5 million over nine years to the city of Morro Bay as our share of the local initiative tax initiative? And what we can see is we need help with our local street maintenance. We have some larger projects that could use some help. So we have community enhancements projects, our centennial stairway linkage between the Embarcadero and downtown perhaps is one of them, and then the Embarcadero promenade that we're going through the planning stages right now. And we also have a large project that would fit in the regional project pot of money. That would be the improvements to 41 Highway One Main Street. And then a regional alternative transportation project, the Morro Bay-Cayucus Connector, some local safe routes to school projects that could fit well in this project for funding. San Jacinto, Maine, we've had some issues there. We've tried a few little fixes there. Hopefully, we can have a bigger fix there. And then our designated pedestrian route, Greenwood, could use some help along those lines also. So what we're asking council to do tonight is to review and provide comments to SLOCOG staff regarding this draft investment plan, the categories, the nine-year duration, the formula for distribution for local streets and roads and transportation improvements, along with the safeguards that are in place. Direct staff to work with our Public Works Advisory Board to discuss the key projects at their April 20 meeting and to provide that input back to SLOCOG. And direct staff to work with SLOCOG to develop a final transportation investment plan ordinance and the safeguards, evaluation to place the number, it on the November ballot for voter consideration. So like I said, this says the, it would be a half-cent sales tax, needs to be passed by all the cities and the county to get on the November ballot, and then it wouldn't be implemented until approved by the voters. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Ron and be his vanna here and go through the slides.
Let's go to the next one. Since I've already started, thanks for that background. So over the past decade, you know, I mentioned that we programmed state and federal funds. We've been having these kind of projects all over the county, including freeway improvements, public transit. What's happened over the past decade is the state and funding money has basically largely collapsed. Part of that is a result of the gas tax. It has been modified since 1991, 1993. Cars are getting more fuel efficient and gas prices are low, which means there's a lower amount of revenue collected per gallon. On top of that, in 2008, there was a transportation bond of $20 million, billion dollars approved by the state. Like a mortgage you got to pay for that. It's a billion dollars a year that's now coming out of the highway fund. Once you account for all that, what you find is there's very little discretionary money that's left. And we're running into a funding crisis. So we can go to the next slide. So our funding is in steep decline. There is very little help we're seeing from the state and federal government. The federal government just passed a five-year transportation bill, about a 5% increase in funding. So it doesn't provide a significant amount of funds to us. We go from $5 million a year to five and a half. At the state level, a variety of state legislature, state legislation's been in process, and as your city managers indicated, the word we're hearing is the likelihood of that passing is about nil. If so, it would be a pretty nominal amount, not enough to accommodate the kinds of problems that we have. To give you an idea, a decade ago, we were spending about $15 million a year on freeway interchanges. This past year, last July, went to zero. And just recently, in December, our program, our board had to take away $7 million of funding we previously had programmed in a five-year program. Every city and county is serving, having major problems with maintaining their streets and roads as well. $12 million shortfall per year throughout our entire region. So it's not just Morro Bay that's suffering these problems. It is countywide. We're finding these problems. We're also finding it's not, it's difficult to compete now at the state level. More and more funding is being shifted to the state in terms of grants, and our ability to match those funds without having a local much funding source is lost. So we're losing out in millions of dollars a year. In the last two years, cities and counties submitted 24 applications for transportation projects, grants. One was funded through our region. There were good grants. We're just not competitive based upon the inability to provide that local match and being competitive with LA, San Diego, and Los Angeles. So we have lobbied hard. A League of California Cities have lobbied hard, again, I think to no avail. So we go to the next one. Our board has asked us to investigate becoming a self-help county. We found that we cannot and do not expect to get the money from state and feds. Our member jurisdictions are realizing you can only raise so much money to address your needs. You can't address the bigger problems that are happening. So 20 counties now have passed these measures called a self-help county. They've taken it upon themselves to raise a sales tax for an investment plan. So those 20 counties represent 82% of California's population. They raised $4.5 billion a year. On a good year, the money that we used to compete for at the state was about a billion dollars a year. So when you go to Los Angeles, to San Diego, and you see road projects, highway projects, and a construction, it's because they've become self-help counties. So if we look at the next slide, so what advantages it'll be in a self-help county? One, local priorities, it's local funding, the state can't take it, federal government can't take it. So it stays locally. Two, a half-cent per year sales tax raises $25 million a year to our region. So that's a pretty significant amount of funding. Being a tourist county, you know, one of the advantages of being a tourist county is that our analysis has indicated that over half the money would be paid for tourists and non-residents. So that's, again, a significant, out of $25 million a year, our residents are paying about 12. It also gives us an ability to leverage those state and federal funds. In order to get a measure through, you have to have a very detailed expenditure plan. So that's very transparent to the voters. They can see what they're going to vote on. Most measures also include a variety of safeguards, and I'll walk into this in a little bit, to assure that those projects are in fact being funded. And then finally, you have the ability to expedite projects, move projects forward. Sometimes projects takes a long time waiting for funding to occur in several categories. You can expedite those funding. So our board has directed us to do a major public engagement effort. Starting last August, we've met with probably 75 groups, probably over 1,000 people countywide, chambers of commerce, rotaries, cojones, planning commissioners, various organizations, and all the state councils, all planning commissions, and met with all of your staff. And we've also conducted four focus groups. We also conducted public opinion polls. That information has come back to us, went back to the board last Wednesday, and that information is showing that the public recognize that there's a need. They're beginning to recognize that the state and federal government is not going to provide the funding. They are also identifying that we really have an opportunity to take this on ourselves. The public opinion poll is identifying 63% in support. On a 20- to 25-year plan, if you modified it down to a nine or 10-year, you can gain another five or seven percentage points. So that adds a lot. Suddenly, it looks like it's very possible that we can provide this kind of a program. So let's look at the public engagement findings. So the kind of the key findings, a little surprising to us. We found out that, as many of you have heard, key issue on everybody's mind is street and road maintenance. Let's repair those potholes. That was the number-one issue that popped throughout. Kind of a second was pedestrian and bike projects, especially along the coast, especially in San Luis Obispo, and especially connecting communities. And again, that's, I think that's a reflection that we're a tourist county as well. Finally, increasing transit service, predominantly senior transportation that are having more and more difficult time trying to cost-effectively get about, and persons with disabilities, and some of our veterans as well. Those are the major issues that kind of came forward. We work with our consultant to try and develop a plan. The consultant also worked with all the various agency staff. They evaluate all the input that we've had through the public opinion polls and through all that outreach of over 1,000 people. And they basically indicated that, one, there's a real good opportunity to have a program. Two, they recommend a nine-year duration and at a half-cent raising about $25 million a year. Over nine years, $225 million to the region in direct fees, not counting any leveraged funds. Every single one of these that have ever passed has the opportunity to leverage state and federal funding and leverage your money as well. So that gives us a pretty good option. They also developed this very rough conceptual investment plan, and that shows some $56 million of various regional projects, $112 million for local projects by formula directly to local jurisdictions, 10% or $22 million for public transit, and another 15% for bike and pedestrian safety and safe routes to school. So that's the concept. If we go to the next slide, what our public opinion and outreach also indicated, this frankly is not a lot of trust in government, that in order to have any kind of a tax, to be successful, you have to have a whole series of bulletproof safeguards. Such safeguards, as one sunset date, our board, our consultant is recommending nine years. A specific expenditure plan, I kind of laid out the fundamentals for you, and I'll walk through it in more detail. Administrative costs set at a maximum of 1%. That's what's allowed in state law. Provisions that assure new development pays our fair way, that we're not basically letting developers off the hook for paying their fair share for highway-related projects or major projects. That this effort is meant to augment our money, not replace money. Therefore, there's a maintenance of effort being recommended to assure that you maintain this level of work. And then finally, you have annual audits, annual reporting, and an independent taxpayers' oversight committee, similar to what you have here, that provides an oversight on the expenditure plan. So these are the same kind of safeguards that if we were moving forward with a plan, we are recommending these type of safeguards. So let's go to the next pie, you know, the 25% for regional highway projects. Now, we have traffic congestion throughout our region. The most predominant is 101 South County, Pismo Beach area, Pismo Beach, Shell Beach. We also have ongoing congestion in San Luis Obispo City, San Luis Obispo City area, Prado Road, 227, Tank Farm Road, and some of those other roadways. We have North County pockets of congestion that's beginning to occur at various interchanges, 46 East, 46 West. And we have here in Highway One that you're wrestling with now how to address some of the ongoing congestion and improve safety at Highway One and Highway 41. Those are the kinds of issues that kind of popped in the outreach that we've had that our consultant is recommending we address. That would raise about $56 million countywide. We would use that money to match any of our additional money we have and any state or federal grants to try and maximize these highway projects. Typically, to give you an idea, an interchange, Los Osos Valley Road interchange, 25% funded by developers, their fair share, 25% by city sales tax, 50% by SLOCOG. It's been that 50% SLOCOG funding that's largely disappeared. So let's look at the next one. Tourist County, strong push for bike and pedestrian projects kind of countywide. We've been working on doing corridor plans throughout our entire region. We found that there's a very, very, very strong support for this. So our consultant, and as they did the outreach going after those 1,000 people and all those different stakeholder groups, that theme kept coming up. So our consultant is recommending 15% be used for those purposes. Some of them for the key projects like the Bob Jones Bike Path, the Tastrow-Tempelton Connector. And in our area, extending the Harbor Walk basically all the way up to Cayucus, Morro Bay-Cayucus Connector. And we've heard locally of trying to extend Harbor Walk up to the city limits. So if you did that, you'd be looking at the harbor all the way to Cayucus. And other just Class II projects, bike lanes, the pathways on major roadways, again, raising about $34 million. We look at the next one is public transit. And public transit, the kind of a key real focus is providing funding for seniors, elderly, the handicapped, the disabled, and our veterans. On the positive side, that's not a really, we could probably triple the amount of money we're investing for a rather nominal amount of funds. So that's something our consultant is definitely recommending. Let's put more money towards senior transportation. Another 1% for transportation demand management, that's our rideshare-type programs, van pool, shuttles. And then 7% for transit. In this whole transportation formula, we're still working out with the transit operators what that formula might be that'll be coming back to our board at our next meeting. Then finally, the big piece of the pie, the next slide, 50% going to local streets, local choice. That's to jurisdictions like you. Comes straight from us, and then by formula, we allocate it to each of the seven cities and the county to do as they see fit. You program it for your highway needs, for your priorities. You match your money. You can use this to match any other money that we would have also to be able to maximize that. Our consultants also recommending, however, that in every area they went to, there was comments for safety for kids going to school, safe routes to school and colleges. There was emphasis on trying to include community enhancements like your boardwalk, your downtown streetscapes, pedestrian walkways. So they have recommended there's be a certain allocation being donated, dedicated for those kind of purposes as well. So we look at the next slide. So what's this mean to the city of Morro Bay? It shows both through a funding formula for that 50% money, you would be receiving the city on a half-cent sales tax, raising again $25 million for our region, about $570,000 per year. $5.2 million over nine years, plus any regional projects that would come to the city. So that would go a lot towards supplementing the kind of money you have to do the kind of projects you want. And your staff had rattle off a number of those projects. From the input we've had, you know, those are street and road maintenance, rehabilitation, again, fix those potholes. Harbor Walk extension going north. Downtown Embarcadero, kind of the Main Street to your Embarcadero connection, let's enhance that. Those were the three major issues that were identified. Some of the regional projects were identified as the 411 interchange, intersection of which the city is doing project development work on that now. And then again, the longer-term Morro Bay-Cayucus Trail project that's underway. So our next steps in this is continuing our comments, our review with every city in the county, and a lot of the communities as well, as I'm doing tonight. It gives you an opportunity to identify what are your concerns? Do you think this plan is moving in the right direction? We're bringing back those comments, our board meeting in May. We will likely have some differences, and we'll try and work those out up to June. And then in June, we'll be looking at, hopefully, trying to resolve those issues, adopt the final plan. And then it goes back out to all of you to say, yes, we support this, or yes, we don't. Where we're saying support, it's not, I vote for a tax increase. Basically, it's saying that, yes, we support the investment plan, the safeguards that are identified, and yes, let's ask the county board of supervisors and SLOCOG board to put it on the ballot, and now let's let the voters decide in November. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions you might have. If I can't have it, I have a number of my staff are here that's been working on this in detail.
Thanks, Mr. Carley. We'll take questions, and then we've got, just-
We'll take questions, and then we've got just a few speaker slips. And following questions, we'll go into public comment and then come back for deliberation. Christine, would you start us off?
Sure, great. Thanks for coming out to talk about it. I think this is making its way through the county, at least in the informal discussions I've been having with folks all over the place. So it's good to get information out and people have the facts. So just in general, briefly, why nine years? It seems to make more sense to say 10, a round number. But is there something about nine that the consultants recommended or that you learned from your input?
The consultant indicated, again, we're at a 63% support for a 20- to 25-year measure. When we evaluated this in the past, it was for a 10-year, you know, it was a 14% spread difference. We didn't test it this time. Our consultant, just from their background and experiences, we should have a lower duration. They're saying statistically, you're much better off at a nine than a 10. Our board wrestled with this, does it be nine, should it be 10? But our consultants largely saying, you're best at a 10. You're better off yet having a probability at a nine. Part of the other issue with that is it's not like your general taxes, not a 50% tax to meet state requirements. You know, this is a special tax, 67%. So it's a very, very high threshold, and that's why we're going through this level of detail. That's why we're assuring their safeguards. That's why there's an expenditure plan.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then how will the citizens oversight board be appointed? Will every city have a representative? And how do you envision that process?
We're still working on the details of that. That's going to, we're going to have a proposal that goes before your staff next Wednesday and before your city managers as well for their input. We're largely looking at a representative from each of the seven cities and then two or three broad representing different interest groups. So that's the concept. It was recommended at our governing board that we solicit the appointments from the jurisdictions from their oversight committee. All seven cities have an oversight committee too. They're kind of familiar with this. That seems to make a lot of sense. I think that's the recommendation we'll be bringing forward. Should be independent, it needs to be independent from us. I think that's what the taxpayers are demanding, that it be safeguarded.
Okay, great. And then what if Morro Bay, the city itself, at the end of the day, if this goes on the ballot and the election happens, what if we don't pass it here? Will we then not be able to participate?
You will, if it passes, you will absolutely participate based upon the expenditure plan identified. So again, if it passes 67%, it applies to everybody according to the investment plan that was approved countywide.
Okay, great. And then final question. So right now, as you're applying for, when SlowCog applies for any grant funding that's available, even if it were to come a little bit more than last year, you know, I'm understanding that there's not very much and there's zero right now coming from the state. But if that were to change in a year, is there, for example, is there a box that you have to check on these grant applications these days that ask if you are a self-help county or not?
There is not, but there is typically, as things are getting more competitive, the criteria is local match. A key part of that is how much local match percentage-wise, we're being outmatched.
Okay.
There's another provision in some of the pending legislation that may or may not be passed, that did provide additional funding for those counties that have self-help. So that's still a proposal. We don't know whether that would pass or not. Maybe it'll pass in the future. If it passes in the future, it gives us another opportunity.
Okay. And then final question. So right currently, we see four, there are four projects that have been listed in our staff report that I'm assuming our staff has advocated for based on input they've received over the years here in Morro Bay. Those four projects, and then with the addition of repair and reconstruction of streets, is there a chance that these five things, repair and reconstruction of streets, and then the four, because I'm counting them as kind of five altogether, is there a chance that these could change between now and the next time you come back? And if so, we would be able to see that before approving or not to support the ballot measure?
You will absolutely be able to see. What you'll see next time is going to be the final ordinance, the final set of projects. We believe these are probably kind of illustrative projects that we've heard about. We would be, if this passes, we would be doing a couple of things, continuing to work with all the cities and the county to try and maximize our opportunities for granting, grant funds. And we're working now on building up the socio-demographic data that all jurisdictions can use. So all that to make our projects much more competitive. And secondly, it's more of a cash flow issue. On a nine measure, you can't bond, so we can't upfront money. However, 25% of that money is being used for highways, big highway projects, 25 million, $30 million. We would be developing a strategic improvement plan right after this is adopted, in that first year. That first year would then define which projects go first. And frankly, the big highway projects aren't ready. They're going to be occurring in year four, year five. So there's an opportunity to upfront some of these funds. So we might get a lot of money coming in in those first one or two or maybe three years. And then it might dribble off somewhat, but we might have the opportunity to fund some of these. That's what we would do. That first year is develop that capital improvement program among all the cities. What are the key projects ready to go? How much money do you need for your local street and roads? What's your request? We would take a project request and then we'll work that through our process.
Okay, great. Thanks very much, Mr. Karley.
Thank you.
That's all.
And I just want to add that all those projects that are on the list are part of our RTP, our Regional Transportation Plan. So they've gone through the vetting process through the SlowCog board.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Lebick.
Matt? No questions? John?
Sure, thanks. Thanks, Ron. And Ron and I had a chance to chat a couple of weeks ago at a meeting, and I got the inside scoop, so I just have a couple of questions. I just, I heard you just say something about you couldn't bond, and what was the reason for that?
Typically, for bonding, you need 20 years. So when we're going with a nine-year measure, you know, we don't have that ability to bond. We have the ability to upfront projects through a strategic plan, but not the ability to bond.
Not the ability to bond. So you couldn't form a special district with the low cost of money right now and borrow a fair amount of money over amortized over 20 or 30 years?
I would, no, because we don't have that cash flow over that dedicated timeframe. However, local jurisdictions could, with the funding that they have, the sales tax measures they have if they have it longer term. So maybe in that, again, this provides that flexibility to you unless yours is sunsetting. I can't recall if Morro Bay's was sunsetting.
What we would have the opportunity to do is to have this essentially half million dollars, which couldn't be bonded, but you could choose to use our Measure Q money in a financing sort of measure as we've discussed before.
That's correct.
Exactly. So I take it the board has fully vetted those opportunities because if you could float a bond with the low cost of money and could make the payment with a lower cost tax increase that was in conjunction with the bonding, then that payment would allow you to borrow a significant amount of dollars upfront as opposed to waiting nine years to get it and do the infrastructure at a lower cost than waiting nine years to get it done.
That's absolutely correct.
So, and that's been vetted, and the answer is can't do.
At the regional level, we cannot, again, the local jurisdictions can with the funding they have.
Thank you.
Noah?
Yes, thank you for coming out, and I'm looking forward to giving the Public Works Advisory Board a chance to review this. I did take some time to look at the website as it's currently presented about the measure and the concept. And there isn't a place that I could see that was clear for a resident who's not on the Public Works Advisory Board to weigh in and look at those lists and perhaps put their input in. I know you did a considerable amount of surveying, but if someone really wanted to get active in this and had a little more buy-in to what is identified as far as projects, where would they go?
If I may, what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask Stephanie Hicks. Stephanie Hicks is our public information officer, and I'm going to have her respond to that question more directly. I see that as something we will be doing, but Stephanie.
Well, I think, hi, Stephanie Hicks, SlowCog staff. I think at this point, we're asking local citizens to come and speak to their councils and provide that feedback to your staff and to your council, and then communicate it to us. We've done over, you know, reached out to over 700 people to try to get a sense of what your community wants. If they absolutely want to talk directly to us, though, they are more than welcome to email me at pio@slowcog.org. I've received quite a few letters with regard to this so far, so I'm compiling those and I present those to the board at our board meetings.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. And Rob, if you could remind us when the next PWA meeting, when this will be coming to the PWA meeting?
The next PWA meeting is on next Wednesday at 5:30 PM in the Vets Hall, so the 20th of April, right here at 5:30. So we'll have this and a couple other smaller items on the agenda.
Great, thank you. And then just, lastly, just to confirm, I know at one point, the Highway 41 and Highway One, I'll call it instead of Main, intersection wasn't really considered particularly by Caltrans as a regional intersection. And frustrating from the city side because we see the impacts when the grade, for example, is closed, and what happens when that artery becomes, the 41 and Main, Highway One artery becomes the main wave connection. So I just want to confirm that now that is considered a regional project, it would be on that regional list, and maybe a component of local funds would be required. But that could be a project in this scenario that would receive more attention and expedited improvements.
The answer is yes. But let me, in defense of Caltrans, in defense of Caltrans, Caltrans money, as I mentioned, is largely deteriorated to zero. They don't have the ability to fund any improvements at all. In the past decade, they've been focusing more and more on their key corridor routes, of which this is not a key corridor route. So the funding for improvements has landed on agencies like ours, working with local jurisdictions. We've always seen it as a regional route. We will continue to see it as a regional route. Your city manager argued very strongly at our city managers' meeting that, you know, there needs to be equity in this also on the North Coast, and we've included that in our plan.
Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Karley. I don't have any questions. I'll move on to public comment, and then we'll move on to deliberation. Thanks very much for the presentation, both on, for SlowCog and our staff. With that, we'll move on to public comment. Dave Albert, and then Dan Rivoire.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Dave Albert. I am the vice president of the San Luis Obispo Bicycle Club. And as such, I've been an active member of your Citizens Bike Committee for the last four or five years here in Morro Bay. And as a result of that committee, this city has become more and more bike and pedestrian-friendly. And consequently, the list of your unmet needs to make cycling and pedestrians safer has become longer, and the funding has continued to dwindle. Rob and his staff have done an amazing job of meeting the needs as best as they can. And I think as a result, you have a couple of jewels here in Morro Bay. The bridge over Morro Creek, which the funding was cobbled together. Every time I ride my bike over that bridge, there are people walking, stroller moms, people walking their pets, visitors walking. It's just an incredible connection between the two parts of your city. And also, the recent repaving of the bike path adjacent to Morro Bay High School is in, instead of making that an adventure ride, it's now a nice, smooth path that kids and families, old people, young people can enjoy. The things that are suffering and the things, the reason we need this investment, and I really call it investment, in our communities are things like the Morro Bay-Cayucus Bike Trail. I'm comfortable riding Highway One between here and Cayucus, but there are a lot of people who would not even dare to do that. But put a trail along the coast, and you'll see, I think, hundreds and thousands of visitors and residents using that trail to get outside and ride along the ocean between Morro Bay and Cayucus. The thing holding us back is funding for construction. And I believe that this half-cent sales tax increase will allow the construction of that path and other paths throughout the county. So again, finally, please consider this as an investment. I know the word tax causes all sorts of people to get all excited. It is a tax, there's no doubt about it. We will all be paying it, but remember that half of the money will come from visitors. And again, it is an investment. If you look back at all the anxiety over the Los Osos Valley Road, Highway 101 interchange, and the traffic congestion and the construction, if you've driven or ridden or walked through there recently, it is a beautiful interchange. And it's the kind of thing that we can look back and say, look what we did. Our tax money paid for that. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave. Dan, welcome. And then we have Carolyn Atkinson following this.
Thank you, Mayor Irons and members of the council. My name is Dan Rivoire, and I'm the executive director of BikeSlow County. And on behalf of BikeSlow County's board and over 4,500 supporters throughout the county, I urge you to support SlowCog and help them place this transportation-specific sales tax on the 2016 ballot. BikeSlow County exists to work on behalf of local residents that believe a complete network, a regional network of safe streets for biking, walking, and driving is absolutely essential to our local quality of life. It's a viewpoint that isn't exclusive to people that support us, people who like to ride hundreds of miles on weekends or who think of themselves as cyclists. It's pervasive. It's shared by parents who want to be able to get their kids to school safely. It's shared by business leaders who are looking for healthier commute options for their employees. And it's shared by more and more decision-makers like you who are looking for ways to manage traffic congestion and help residents live happy, healthy lives while being good stewards of your community's limited resources. There's no question that the transportation funding situation is abysmal, and it presents us with a very real threat to your ability to accomplish local goals and plans. We, your constituents, know you're between a rock and a hard place. We know you'd love to see reform at the state and additional state funds come, help us solve our problems and accomplish our goals. But while we wait, neighboring jurisdictions are moving forward with these types of sales tax measures. Over 80% of the population of the state of California live in jurisdictions with sales tax measures for transportation specifically. Our neighboring jurisdictions are out competing us now. They're building projects, accomplishing goals. They're using their local money to apply for matching for grants at the state and federal level and bringing in even additional outdoor, outside dollars to the local region to get their projects done. We don't believe that this project is a direct tax that you're putting on the people. We believe that you should give your residents, your constituents, the opportunity to have their voices heard. Our voters deserve the chance to weigh in, to compete, to empower you to build the new infrastructure, the new bikeways, the new bridges, the new safe routes to school, the new Morro Bay to Cayucus Connector, and accomplish the goals that our community wants to make our lives tangibly better. Once again, on behalf of BikeSlow County, I ask that you please support SlowCog in moving forward with this. Fight for the projects that you care most in your community, and let's get some more projects done. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Carolyn Atkinson, thank you. And then Barbara Dorr.
I'm Carolyn Atkinson, and I live in Los Osos. And I'm a member of the Central Coast Taxpayers Association, and we oppose, oh, we oppose this for several reasons. We feel the government, and I provided this letter to all of you, it's a letter we provided to SlowCog. The government and legislature have not made transportation funding a priority. The governor and legislature continue its quest to build the California High Speed Rail. And the governor and legislature continue to support Caltrans' bloated bureaucracy. The recent SlowCog poll found that increasing local half-cent, increasing local half-cent sales tax would fail currently. And the reason for that is that the taxpayer doesn't trust the elected officials to spend the money properly, as we see the state has done. The state of California actually has stolen our local gas tax dollars and has spent it on other failed programs. We request that you, city council, also do not support this and send a letter to the governor and the legislature asking basically for us to get our money back. And I was listening, I've listened to a lot of presentations on this, and one of the things about the state is that Caltrans has just did an audit, the state audited, and they have over 3,500 employees, that is, they are overstaffed by 3,500 employees at a cost of over half a billion dollars. a billion dollars a year. The audit also found that 62% of Caltrans' projects go over budget, and that, an audit last year, that Caltrans has weak control over spending, and in some cases, no control overall. We have the fifth highest road maintenance cost at $501,000 per mile, and we have the fifth worst road conditions in the country. And what that says to me is that our local governments aren't pushing back against the state. They're not saying, "Give us our money back." They're not saying, "You need to fix Caltrans and give us that money." And it's kind of a coercive tactic that they're turning, asking us to tax ourselves when the money exists. And I also feel that, you know, there was, there's a saying, there'll always be men like that if there's women like you. My sister used to say that about men I dated. Although, the state will always do what it does if we allow them to keep doing what it's doing by our local officials. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Dorr, and then Dave Nelson.
Excuse me, I'm just chuckling. I'm thinking, "Local control in our states." Barbara Dorr, resident. I guess, sitting there, I get a little angry, because I think maybe all the COGS and the League of California Cities and the city councils should really get after the state and say, "It's time to fund transportation. We use roads throughout the county and everybody else's county, throughout the state." I guess I'm a little tired of tax increases. We, I helped fight for the bond measure for our school district, and I'm really happy it passed. And I'm glad we're going to have a better community college at Questa. But, and I know this city council has talked about additional increases in sales tax for roads and different issues. And I don't know if that's still something the council is looking at. But, and I would hope that before anybody voted, before COG, that there would be a final list of projects, so everyone voting on this would know exactly what our city was going to spend their money on. Also, I've done grants for Orange County for many years. And you're not, you're not going to get your grants unless you have a good local match, because it shows you, as a local community, have set that as a priority. I think that's why you didn't get some of your early general plan, local coastal plan, grants, because you didn't set any money aside. You did do that in the next round of grants, but it's critical to set it as a high priority. Watching the secondary dwelling planning commission hearing, stayed to the end, listened on YouTube to the very end. And they talked, they were approving the sale of the less, about a 10,000 acre, 10,000 square foot parcel adjacent to Lemos. And they brought up the fact that it's, it's on the Slocog's list to have a park and ride. And yet, here the city is selling it to make money for the general fund for our city, when they're not, we are not even reaching out to our COG and ask, and seeing if they want that property. So all this communication, all your RTPs or Regional Transportation Programs, if we aren't all continuing to talk and continuing to implement those things in everyday actions of the city, it's just not, it's not worth it. And I'm ashamed to say, I just really hate to see another, another sales tax go up in our community. Sorry about that.
Thanks, Barbara. And David Nelson. And followed by David is Rick Dashler.
Hi, Dave Nelson, President of Morro Bay. I agree totally with the last two speakers. You know, we had, we passed a half a cent, half a percent sales tax in Morro Bay. I think it's working for what it's supposed to be working for. You know, I too voted for the bond measure for Questa College. It seemed like a good investment. But you're going to ask residents to pay another half a percent, that's going to bring our sales tax up to 9%. I mean, why? I don't, I don't see the benefit in it. It's, it's, you know, like the last speaker said, it's time to kick the state and, you know, make them do their job. We send a lot of money to the state that doesn't come back. And the reason is, nobody's kicking them, nobody's whining about it. And I'm personally not going to vote for a half a cent sales tax for this purpose. And I think you're going to find a lot of resistance. I like Slocog, I think they do a good job. I really enjoy the projects that we do have here. But it needs a different funding. This self-tax stuff, I think we're paying way too much sales tax. I mean, and sales tax hits, hits the middle class and the poor people a lot, really hard. I mean, it's not that it doesn't hit everybody, but people that are making, you know, $20,000 to $50,000 a year, paying 9% on everything they're buying, that, that's imposing a high tax on people, especially when money's flying around. I guarantee you, if we sat down with this state budget, we could find lots of money that's being wasted. And we can do it right here. I mean, we pay consultants to do everything. And it's just not, you know, not prudent. If we really want this stuff, we should be working toward it in a different way. You can't just keep taxing people. And it's our tourists that we're taxing. I mean, you make this place more expensive than another place because you're adding another half a percent tax. It doesn't, it's just not right. I mean, these taxes just aren't right. And just to go ahead because we want these things, isn't a good reason to tax people. Thank you.
Thanks, David. And Rick Dashler. And then Marlo Jo Sadowski.
Rick Dashler, Morro Bay. Good evening, council and staff. I haven't really formed an opinion on this yet, just hearing about it tonight, so I'm not positive or negative on it. But I do have a couple of questions I'd like answered. How much is anticipated to fund the ballot campaign, and where would those funds come from? Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Marlo Sadowski. And that'll conclude our public comment.
Hi again, Marlo Jo Bruton Sadowski, North Morro Bay. My, my concern is that I, before we do all these improvements we're making, we need to have our city planning the critical infrastructure needs for those projects. So when you have the bike people coming from all over, it's wonderful. But our bathrooms, you know, we have the embaldeiro walk out to the rock, and there's a lot more people out there. We're not keeping up with those bathrooms as it is. So I don't, when we look at participating and funding for, for road infrastructure, or bike paths, or whatever, I really encourage us to look at our needs for the infrastructure, and who's going to pay for it. Who's going to pay for it? You know, it's, it, the ratepayers here pay for the sewage that comes in and is treated. So ultimately, the residents are paying for the increased tourism. And I'm, I love, you know, ecotourism is wonderful. But we need to have a critical infrastructure set up, and we need to go after monies from other sources than ourselves, like Caltrans, or whoever's building the, building these routes, and not tax the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Marlo Jo. And with that, that concludes our public comment. Thank you all for your coming out and speaking, and for that. And with that, we'll bring it back to council for discussion. And I do have one, the campaign funding, there's a question on that. Maybe we can explain how that part of it works. Just, there's one question on, okay, if we move forward with this, what funding is going to support the campaign? And if we can, if we can answer that, that'd be appreciated.
By law, this is Ron DeCarli, Slocog. By law, public money cannot be used in a campaign. So at such, at such time that if, this is approved by all the councils, and if this goes through the Slocog Board, and if it's approved by the Board of Supervisors, to put it on a ballot, at that point, that would, the only information public agencies can provide is information. Any advocacy, any campaign, then would have to come from private sources.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Christine?
I just wanted to clarify one question. I, would our tax go up to 9%? Is that accurate? I think we should clarify that.
It's actually a good, good moment for a, for a little tax talk. So the base sales tax in the state of California is 7.5%. Six and a half of that percent goes to the state. And whoever said it is right, we don't see a lot of that come back to the city. 1% goes to the city of Morro Bay. So 1% of 7.5% are one of the 7.5%. And the city of Morro Bay has approved a half-cent Measure Q sales tax, so ours is 8% here in the city.
And therefore, any proposed increase through this measure would bring it to?
Yeah, would, I'm sorry, would bring it to 8.5% in Morro Bay.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
No questions.
No? You want to start us off with deliberation, discussion? Noah?
Yeah, I would. And I just want to start by thanking Slocog for attending the business forum sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce the other week. I found that really helpful. And I hope you continue to do those outreach opportunities as you see those available. And I also want to recognize you, Mayor Irons, because in my time on the council, I've noticed different styles from, from our mayors in their approach and participation with Slocog. And I think you have really taken that position and role very seriously, and are one of the key reasons we've achieved some really important improvements in, in our infrastructure recently. And that's because you're engaged in the Slocog process. And I would attribute the success of the bridge and being able to deliver that, in large part, to your efforts there. So I really do appreciate that. And I know you bring a good perspective of our community to the Slocog effort. So I wanted to say thank you for that. I do think that it's important to leave this up to the voters. We have talked considerably about doing something here in Morro Bay, as far as advancing our Measure Q attempts to improve streets. We know from good analysis and look in our pavement management plan, we're not going to get to improve the streets to the level that we need to with the current situation. We did talk about passing our own city sales tax focused on streets additionally, and strategically have decided to not go there, knowing that the county was looking at this larger effort that would help with streets and, and some other things. So that seemed to me, and I think our decision at that point was to stick with the county process and see how that goes with, with the voters. And I'm certainly supportive of doing that. I think it is very important that we get this to the Public Works Advisory Board for more discussion, and look forward to people participating in that on April 20th at 5:30 here at the Vets Hall. And having that final list to review, I think the list is fairly accurate to the needs that we have. I will comment about whether or not, or how effective we could be with lobbying the state to handle funds in a more efficient and responsible way. And we, as a small city, have commented and participated in trying to communicate to them. But by far, the most effective way we can do that is participation with the League of California Cities. And, and we do that. And there, I know there, there are some new initiatives coming out of the league that should help us, and hopefully, the state will pay attention to those. But realistically, that's a long ways out. And this is, this is a potential opportunity for us to really take the matter into our own hands. And, and with local control, that we should have some good oversight on. And I, and I do like the idea about involving our own Citizens Finance and Measure Q Committee in reviewing how these funds are being expended. So those are my comments. And I'll just look forward to seeing more detail as it comes back to us, and then sitting back and watching how this plays out in the voters' process in November, if it ends up there.
Thank you. Mr. Heding?
Thank you. And I will not reiterate what Noah said. I agree with a majority of what he said. I too appreciate what Slocog has done for this city, what the mayor has done as a member of Slocog for this city. I'm going to echo that and repeat that, contrary to what I said. However, you know, tax increases just leave a terrible taste in your mouth. It's just, it's just something that I think we're all tired of because of the state of California, and the federal government in terms of what they're doing. And that is pushing everything down to the local level. And they've done it to the point that they have literally taken away a majority of all of the opportunities that we had to gain any opportunity to fund effectively large capital projects, like highway infrastructure projects, effectively in the future, without either a tax increase and/or using slush funds, which, which this city does not have. And that's the real issue. This, this city is, is literally not ever had a capital budget. It has not had the ability to fully fund road improvements. And that's the number one complaint that I hear, that my peers on this council, I believe, here in the community, and I think that you hear. And I think it's imperative that if we don't do something now, it's going to cost us a lot more in the future. As unpalatable as the increased tax may well be, my fear is that we're going to, down the line, be spending much more on the exact same issue we talked about two or three years ago. And that would be the, the roads issue. I think the one thing I would add, and ask for a discussion with regard to our P-WAB and Finance Committee, is that they evaluate what other funding mechanisms Slocog looked at. And also, that we get a report on what was considered as a possibility, like an EIFD, Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, if there was a possibility to do something like that. And I didn't ask Ron directly, but, but those are being done now as replacements for old redevelopment agencies. And so, so with that, that summary, as unpalatable as it is, I, I too feel that we have to send it forward. My fear is that our roads will continue to crumble. At least we get the benefit of some participation of taxpayers that are outside of the city that will help fund this, if it need, it does occur, and that is the tourists, as much as we don't want that to happen to anybody. So I think it's worth the evaluation and look because of the quality of the project and the need for this city at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Matt?
I think there's a history of passing these things down the road. And so, I agree that this is a great idea, and the work that Slocog's done is great, and it's very apparent in Morro Bay. And leaving it up to the voters would be the way to do it. Let them be the ultimate decision makers.
Thanks, Matt. Christine?
Thanks. And great comments from everyone here. Not much I could disagree with you on. It is incredibly disheartening to live through prioritization on the state and federal level that doesn't match our own priorities here in, in the city of Morro Bay, likely not even the county of SLO. So again, disheartening to have to look inward for this type of support. One question I have is, if we look at staff recommendation, are you asking us now at this point, have we done recommendation number one? And if we're going to make a motion of something, would it start with recommendation two and three? Because I guess I'm sensing, you know, that...
That'd be correct. So I'm sure Slocog has been taking notes. I've been taking notes. So we will, one is done. Two and three are the direction-type recommendations.
Okay, so then I'll wrap up, wrap my comments around those two. So, you know, I would agree that we could definitely direct staff to run these key projects through the Public Works Advisory Board, and also take any public, public input beyond that. If people between now and, and the next week or two have other comments, I think they could send them right to you, Mr. Levic. That would be the case?
Yes, our Levic. R. Lively@morobayca.gov.
Okay. So if they can't make the PWEB meeting, they have another access point. And then, you know, certainly, I would continue to encourage our staff, it sounds like you already have been, to work closely with SLOCOG as things develop. But I'm wondering, Mayor Irons, Councilmember Heading had a question about, you know, different mechanisms for funding. And I don't know if you would be able to speak to that as our representative on SLOCOG? I think it would help to clarify.
Keep going with your question.
Well, I was just wondering. It was brought up, and it was left kind of a question, like, was there another choice other than this? And I just think it needs to, if there is a way to conclude that.
Yeah.
Because I also heard Councilmember Heading said he wanted maybe finance to take a look at this. And that wasn't what I was, I wasn't thinking our Finance Committee would have the time to do it. So I just want to clarify that for us.
Sure.
But at this point, that would be the one thing I wanted to clarify. Otherwise, I'm comfortable at this point sending this process forward and at some point, having it go before all the people of the county to decide.
Okay. Thanks, Councilmember Johnson. As far as the funding, if Mr. DeCarly could come up, I think we might be able to address this. I talked to him as well prior to our SLOCOG board meeting as far as funding and mechanisms for that. Truly, this is a sales tax initiative, as I understand what we're discussing. Funding mechanisms, Mr. DeCarly, if you can elaborate a little bit, maybe done a little bit differently at the local level, but maybe that might be...
Let me look at it from a different perspective. We just completed last year a major regional transportation plan, looked at all the different projects. It identified $1.6 billion of projects, of which at least half of those we need funding for. The plan has to be fiscally constrained. So in that plan, we adopt, we evaluate, we did a whole series of different options for funding. And assessed those and brought those forward, you have a gas tax increase. Is that likely? 30% opposition from the general public. Not a chance. Raise developer fees. All jurisdictions are screaming about developer fees now. Cost of developer fees are too high, every single jurisdiction. Politically palatable? Not a chance. State and federal funds? Absolutely. That's continuing to go after state and federal funds. League of California Cities have done so. All statewide transportation associations have done so. It's not successful. It's nice. I agree. We ought to get it from the state. That's the first thing that should happen, but simply, it's not. So if we want to do something, we have to look at it. The only one other funding source we have not looked at since that plan was Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District. And that's a relatively new concept that was just passed by the legislature. It gives a lot of flexibility. And it's kind of replacing redevelopment agencies. And to this point, I'm not certain who's actually done one yet. I think it'd be the last thing I'd want to do is be a test case in this county. So that's something we've been waiting for, to see how's that work out, and let's see how it's successful. I've been hearing through the grapevine, as that moves forward, first one that goes forward probably be sued. I don't think I'd want to put us in that position.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. DeCarly. Appreciate it. Just want to go through some of my comments. And I just want to thank Mr. Smuckler for your comments as far as my representing the city on the SLOCOG board. But I do recognize that all of us sit on boards, and I think all of us take that job seriously and good representation. But I wouldn't be remiss if I didn't thank the SLOCOG staff. They're great to work with. I certainly appreciate that and all the stuff that we've been successful in. So with that, I am supportive of going through with this. I think some of the comments, and sitting on the SLOCOG board and looking at transportation funding as we do and understanding that picture, one of the comments that was reiterated at the SLOCOG meeting was an example of funding and projects. The LOVR overpasses as the example, I think the example was, it took 15 years to get through that, and it was, it cost twice as much. So it's taking longer to get through the projects and it's costing twice as much. And so with that, I think we are going to be seeing the, if we're not at least looking at how, what our options are for investment into our infrastructure, and many things for that matter, then it's just going to lead to a higher cost in the end anyway. I agree that we should be pursuing measures that would keep control of our sales tax dollars instead of losing them to the state. I definitely agree with that. But with all the discussion that's taken place tonight, having oversight, having a sunset clause, I believe nine years, should this be successful, will go by quickly. We will be measured very closely by our public in addition to an Oversight Commission, Committee. And we have to be very successful if we want to look at renewing that or, you know, living up to what our commitments are through that initiative. So with that, I'm agree to move forward on that. And ultimately, this is a, it's just a matter of giving the choice, giving the public the choice to learn a little bit more about this. It's very specific. And I believe from the community members that I've heard through the last street summit a couple of years ago now, everybody overwhelmingly was supportive of paying for paving their streets. So with that, I'm supportive of it and would move for staff recommendation.
So moved.
Second?
So we have a motion by Mr. Smuckler, second by Ms. Johnson, and we have discussion. Questions?
Mike to come on. I thought I heard Councilman Smuckler talk about the PWEB and mention the Finance Committee. And could you remind me what, that's where I took my reference from and what were you speaking with regard to on that specifically?
What I'm speaking to is to make sure PWEB was built into the process. They are, that's identified in recommendation item number two. We'll be going there April 20th, this next Wednesday at 5:30 here in the Vets Hall. With the Finance Committee and Measure Q, I think I was, what I was referring to was that provides a very important and valuable built-in oversight body for our community to look at how these funds are being spent, to review that, and help ensure that it's being responsibly managed.
Okay. That clarifies it. I just wondered what your side comment was when I mentioned that process. So, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries 5-0. Were there any other discussion or direction conversations that we needed to clarify other than the motion in regard to your question? Now we're good to go? Okay. With that, that'll conclude item C2, and probably a good time for a short recess, and we'll come back at quarter to nine. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome back, everybody. We're back in our city council meeting. We will continue on with the next item on the agenda, which is item C3, Consideration of Harvard Advisory Board Recommendation for the City of Morro Bay to Sponsor or Promote Additional National Marine Sanctuary Public Information Forums. Mr. Eric Endersby, our Harvard Director, it's all you.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Irons and Council.
Thank you.
So our purpose tonight is to consider a February 4, 2016 Harvard Advisory Board Recommendation that the City Council support additional public information forums related to potential pros and cons of marine sanctuary establishment off our central California coast. We're recommending the City Council consider the HAB recommendation to sponsor such forums. And additionally, staff have identified CMANQ, the Californias Marine Affairs and Navigation Conference, as a possible host of potential future forums and recommend, should the Council wish to facilitate future forums at CMANQ, be asked to potentially host these. As far as alternatives go, we've identified two alternatives. One, I kind of call the wait-and-see approach, which is the City of Morro Bay doesn't actively seek or additional public forums, but remains open to facilitating events offered or organized by other governmental agencies. Or the seek-and-engage approach, which is the City of Morro Bay aids and participates in broader countywide forums sponsored by other government agencies or other organizations. As far as fiscal impacts go, yet to be seen potential fiscal impacts if we have to host and provide for speaker travel or speaker fee costs and whatnot, but that would be a work in progress, yet to be seen. I'll skip over most of the background. Safe to say, we held a public information forum that NOAA presented on marine sanctuaries back in January. At the February 4 Harvard Advisory Board Meeting, as I already spoke, the Harvard Advisory Board recommended the City Council consider hosting additional forums to get other public information out there for the council and for the community. And the issue was brought forth as a future agenda item and had support for that at the February 9 meeting. The HAB recommended that the forums be intended to provide objective, fact-based information to the city and its citizens, information provided by other city and county governments, other authorities, regional agencies, and others that may be in a position to basically tell how things have gone under sanctuary governance. For purposes of the public information forums, the Harvard Advisory Board further opined that it doesn't make a difference whether the experiences were positive, negatives, or neutral, just as long as they're based on facts and do not stray into advocacy. So it's not a pro-con, debate the issues one way or the other. It's information gathering on the potential impacts of living within the National Marine Sanctuary. Should the Council consider this HAB recommendation, the city's sponsor or support additional forums? We'd ask that we provide direction to staff accordingly. And again, we'd recommend, if we do go there, that CMANQ may be a well-placed organization to provide or host such forums. In addition, we'd, if directed, staff would identify potential partners for any joint hosting or co-sponsoring of these opportunities. And finally, we appreciate any recommendations or guidance from council on other entities or organizations that might prove an effective non-advocacy information session during such public information forums. Harvard Advisory Board Ad-Hoc Committee did provide the council, I think today via email I sent and also got out into the agenda, a potential list of presenters at such forums. I want to add that that list was, is in a work in progress. It's not all-inclusive by any means. It's just a starting point that the HAB Ad-Hoc Committee has initially identified some potential speakers. And with that, I'll put them under my time limit, and then I'll ask, answer any questions.
Oops. Thank you. Start off with questions for Eric. Matt?
Eric, in terms of moving ahead with this and given the list that was provided by the Subcommittee on the HAB, do you have any idea of timeframe to doing this? And if we did provide you direction, I guess we can give you a time, we could ask for a time limit. But do you have any, looking at that list, a timeframe in putting together something like this, what it could entail?
Well, the NOAA forum took, you know, we invited NOAA. I think we got that direction the end of 2015. We took maybe a month and a half, two months to put that together. So I would anticipate something similar, a month or two to get, to contact possible people, get ahold of CMANQ, see what their availability may be.
Do you feel that the list that, you didn't say, you said it was not necessarily all-inclusive list from HAB, but I guess a little bit more work on if there are additional ones or asking other community members for additional names for that list and moving ahead with that?
Yeah. I think outreach to other community members, to council, others that have suggestions on what, and even some of the folks on that list or agencies on that list, others that they may recommend.
Okay. That's all the questions.
If I could, on that subject, there's sort of two issues with timeframe. And this is, the recommendation is fairly open, so the council can provide guidance. We were able to put the NOAA one together in six, eight weeks, but that was really just coordinating schedules. The city did not have to put together the NOAA outreach. That was a package deal. They came down and did it. Were you to direct the staff to create an event, that would be a substantial, take some substantial resources on the part of the staff to reach out to all these people to craft an event? That would be the, perhaps the most resource-intensive and the most staff-hands-on. Another approach would be to direct the staff to reach out to CMANQ, to ask them, to invite them to come and put together an event. We could provide them this list of some of the folks. I just want us to be mindful of the staff resources required to create an event.
Christine? Sorry about that.
That's okay. I never, it's like the pinball, you know? I never know which way you're going to go. So ding, it's me. All right. So thinking about this in broad terms, here are my questions. And they may be questions you're thinking, oh, she knows the answer. But I'm asking them because I'm not sure everybody who's tuning into the conversation may know the same answers. So can you, Mr. Endersby, explain CMANQ? And in your explanation, would you consider them an advocacy group? Or would you consider them on par with the NOAA who came in charge of the sanctuary program and, you know, as directed by the federal government? So what are the differences between NOAA and CMANQ? And could you say what CMANQ is?
Sure. CMANQ is the California Marine Affairs and Navigation Conference. It's an industry organization, association that's probably 60 years old, comprised of pretty much every California port and harbor authority up and down the coast. Their primary interest historically has been in dredging. That's what we go to Washington, D.C. for and with CMANQ. But they also weigh in and engage in lots of other coastal affairs from, you know, navigation, Coast Guard issues, local control issues in terms of water usage and boating, very similar to the California Harbor Masters Association. They're an industry-led, or industry-membered association, of which we're a member. Completely different from NOAA. NOAA's a government agency. CMANQ does have an advocacy or legislative position on sanctuaries. They are supportive of sanctuaries, but they do have issues with sanctuaries, you know, based on their members' participation. So they're, it's not a fair comparison to compare the two. And NOAA's a government agency that, NOAA Sanctuary Program is, they're all about sanctuaries.
Okay. And just in general, there's only one group out there doing sanctuaries, right? So we don't, we couldn't say invite NOAA and then invite someone else and say, hey, we like this sanctuary, you know, administration better than that one, right? There is only one agency that is currently doing that.
Well, you've got NOAA Sanctuaries, you've got Sanctuary Foundations, that are kind of a quasi-public-private arm of the sanctuaries that do lots of outreach and education and fundraising. And there's other NGOs out there, I'm sure, that are sanctuary-lined as well that could be contacted.
Okay. And then have you been approached by any other jurisdictions of the city at all since we held the NOAA event? Is there anybody else who said, hey, you know, we want to hold something else next? And, you know, what are your opinions on that? Or has the county stepped forward to say, hey, maybe we need to do something on a larger scale for the whole county, another, say, Santa Barbara, Northern Santa Barbara County? Anybody in the system at all reached out to us about co-sponsoring things in the future? Or any feedback you may have received on, from other staff members at any other jurisdiction or governmental agency locally?
I would say... Actually, I'll start on that one. So I was approached not by any jurisdictions, but by a single private citizen who was advocating to, that the city host, facilitate, organize additional outreach events. And I believe that Mayor Irons has had a discussion with one or more elected officials around the county, asking about perhaps encouraging some county-wide event instead of a tightly-focused Morro Bay event. Eric, any others?
No. No official outreach.
No others, then?
Inquiries early on in the sanctuary process, but nothing official.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And then, is there any reason, I mean, anyone at any time can come to the city and say, hey, or be invited by, you know, citizens in the community. However it happens, we often host meetings in our facilities, and anyone's always available to find out what it costs to rent the facility and have an event. But they would then have to pay for those expenses in any rate, unless the city were to say, hey, we're going to sponsor it in this case.
Yeah. Certainly, if an organization or group came forward saying, we want to provide a public information forum on sanctuaries, and we want to rent the Vets Hall on such and such a date, they'd work through the normal booking process through Sam's Department and make that happen. And there would be some fees associated with that, like you say, unless the city sponsored it.
And the city would feel no, the city staff would feel no, would not ask if you were an advocacy group or on which side of the issue you were. If you want to rent a city facility and hold an event, as long as it's available, it's all yours.
Okay. Those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Eric, the CHUMAS have received their nomination to be added to the inventory. And from what I understand, through NOAA, there are four steps to sanctuary designation if they're designated. Do you have any idea from the beginning to the end, how long that process might take? Do you have any idea from the beginning to the end, how long that process might take?
If you take both Channel Islands and Monterey as experiences, it's generally probably a two-to-four-year process. Can be longer.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Noah? None? I have no questions at this time either. We do have three speaker slips, so at this time I'll open it for a public comment. Start with Jeremiah O'Brien and then Alan Alward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council and City Staff. My name is Jeremiah O'Brien and I'm representing the Morro Bay Commercial Fishermen's Organization. And we do recommend that the city adopt the discussion and conclusion by the Harvard Advisory Board. And the reason for that is because NOAA was the last people to make a presentation here. And I believe I discussed with various members in the city here that after their presentation, I think it's necessary for the public to have some discussion about some of the things that might have been right or wrong in their presentation. I believe I gave each and every one of the members of the council and the city manager a packet. I was not, unfortunately, not able to be here for that particular meeting. But I gave them a packet that contained letters signed by many of the people who spoke at that meeting from NOAA. And I did not know what their answers to some of the questions might have been about participation and management issues and so forth and so on. But I think it's clear that we should have some form of meeting to be able to clear the last sales pitch, if you will. They are the, and I'm not running them down, but they are the salesmen. So they're going to offer the sales pitch. And I think it's clear that we should be able to cut through the, cut to the truth of what actually have previous sales pitches, what have we received from them. Also tonight, I'd like to give Dana, if she could give these, pass these around to you, more letters in regards to this issue. One of them here is from the Harbor Masters and Port Captains Association. And it outlines their thoughts on the issue. Another is, this is new, another is a new letter just written March 14th from Pacific Coast Federation Fisheries Associations, which is one of our political, a political association for the fishing industry. Another new one, this is from the Recreational Fishermen's Alliance, RFA. They're one of the bigger, biggest recreational fishing group in the state of California on the West Coast. Another is a new one from the Alliance for Communities Sustainable Fisheries.
I have to ask you to wrap it up, Jeremiah.
Oh, okay. I wasn't paying attention to the light. And there's a couple others here on, from surfers and the surfing issues they've had in the sanctuaries. I believe, John.
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up, Jeremiah.
I believe there's six steps to that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Next is Alan Alward and followed by Marla Sadowski.
Good evening, council members. My name is Alan Alward. I'm a fisherman here in Morro Bay. I sit on the Harvard Advisory Board. I'm on the Sanctuary Ad-Hoc Committee. And I have personally talked to some of these people that are on this list of prospective presenters at a public forum. And the folks I talked to, I got their permission to put them on the list. So they agreed that they, if they are able to, would be willing to come and speak. So these are not theoretical people to come and speak. These are people that I have actually talked to that have stories to tell. And they're compelling stories. And I think if you could hear them speak, you would want to ask them questions about what has happened to them. And I hope you get that opportunity. I don't know what the proper venue is for this stuff to come out, but I personally would like to see them come and speak before the council and have, you have an opportunity to question them, but maybe that's not possible. The speakers that I have, that I personally interviewed are Steve Scheiblauer, he's a Harbor Master in Monterey Harbor. Kathy Fosmark, she's a longtime member of the Sanctuary Advisory Committee through Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary. Dan Wolford, recreational fisherman, former chair of the Pacific Fisheries Management Council. Mark Gorlick, he's a recreational fisherman. He's also a lawyer and he has been involved, sits on the Sanctuary Advisory Council for the Gulf of the Fairlands National Marine Sanctuary. Scott Jarrett is a big wave jetski surfer. And he was particularly interesting to me because he's not a fisherman, not a recreational fisherman, just an individual who was trying to use the waters of the ocean in Monterey to enjoy himself. And he eventually got cited for what he was doing. And to hear his story of how he tried to change the rule, to work with the sanctuary management, and then what he had to go through, through the judicial process that you get involved in if you get a ticket in the sanctuary, to me, it was frightening. So he's agreed to come and speak, and I think his testimony would be very interesting, entertaining. You would enjoy it. Well, I don't know if you'd enjoy it, but you would want to ask questions. Chris Voss is a commercial fisherman. He negotiated with the Sanctuary Administration at Channel Islands National Marine Sanctuary. He, you know, they talk about collaboration and he collaborated with them. But when push came to shove, they completely dropped him, turned around, stabbed him in the back. There are other people who have similar experiences like that to share. And then finally, who I personally contacted was Monica Galligan. She's a lecturer at the California State University, Monterey Bay. And she reviewed the economic proposal that was put along with the CHUMASH Sanctuary. And she has some interesting things to say about that. And that's all I have time for.
Thanks, Alan. Appreciate it. Marla Jo Sadowski?
Okay. Hi, I'm Marla Jo Sadowski, North Morro Bay. Where'd my paper go? A second here. All right. I support the CHUMASH Heritage National Marine Sanctuary nomination bid to establish a National Marine Sanctuary protected area from the end of the Monterey Bay, I mean, Monterey National Marine Sanctuary, would come all the way down here and to North Santa Barbara, the Channel Islands Sanctuary. I think one of the things that I am concerned about is the, let me, no, I'll back up. First of all, we need to talk about this. And we need to talk about it, so I'm happy that they want to, that they want to talk. But the representation that I'm concerned, because the Harbor Advisory Board is an advisory board to our city council. And they, I believe the actions that they've taken have been clearly as opponents of the National Marine Sanctuary. So it concerns me when I see them backing up to where we're not advocating one way or the other, because I think it's very clear that they are a opponent. So the other thing is that, was the individual that came to you, was that Fred Collins of the Northern CHUMASH Tribal Council? Mr. Buckingham? I'd like to know that later. Because I know that he reached out to this council and to the mayor a year ago, maybe, before the opening of the, our bridge, our bike bridge over there, was prior to that. And he was told that he need, that you asked him to give six months' time before he came to approach the city. And then the next thing I see is the city council has on the agenda to vote to oppose the sanctuary. And that was without any public discussion or anything else. So, and I know that Fred personally went to the fishermen and at the beginning of this and said, listen, we're not going, we're not changing your fishing regulations. You can write whatever you want concerning fishing in this document if that's what you're concerned about. That was the first proposal that came. And they, each one of these, the Fairlands, Monterey.
I'm going to have to ask you to conclude.
They are all set up with specific goals that are unique to that sanctuary.
Thank you, Marla.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that concludes our public comment. With that, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. And Matt, you want to lead us in discussion on this?
In the last number of few months since we had the NOAA group come to town, the Harbor Board has been very interested and they've had a number of interested parties here in town come in and say, you know what, we'd like to have more information. And so with that said, that's why with them putting together this list of folks and saying, they're not trying to advocate either way, but we'd like to have more information, I think it's a palatable request. I think by doing this and Eric and, I don't know how we could do that, between staff time, like Dave was saying, because it is an intensive gig, or having some harbor, some people from the Harbor Advisory Board be part of the outreach and getting these, organizing this, I don't know how that would work or could work. And time is of the essence also to do this. But I think it's a fair request to go forward with it.
Christine?
Okay. You know, I think it's just important that maybe Mr. Endersby could clarify again, the nomination process, and this was one of my questions I didn't ask before, but it would help me in the discussion moment. So, Mr. Endersby, where are we in the process? Or where is not we, but the CHUMASH Heritage National Marine Sanctuary? Where are they in the process and what could a next step entail?
So the nomination was submitted and accepted by NOAA as being complete, being an acceptable nomination. They didn't say it was good, bad, or otherwise. They just said that the application is complete and it contains all the elements it needs. It's placed on an inventory list of possible future sanctuary designation. It sits on that list until pulled off, from my understanding, one of three ways. The presidential, president deems it so and pushes it forward, which is what, two of the other nominations that recently went on the list right before the CHUMASH sanctuary proposal did. Congress can take it up and push it forward congressionally, or NOAA can internally move it forward and pull it off the list and start the public process. I think the public process remains the same no matter which path it takes. It starts into robust public engagement and stakeholder meetings and, like I say, a two, three, maybe four-year process for that to take place. So NOAA has its own internal mechanisms to implement all that, that they've done on past sanctuary processes. The things that really changed recently was how sanctuaries get designated and get placed on inventory. It used to be a top-down, NOAA created an inventory list and then publicly threw that out for recommendation from the public. And that's where Monterey and Channel Islands and the current sanctuaries came from. They've changed that in the recent decades and changed it from a bottom-up, asking for recommendations coming from the public or from the communities to designate sanctuaries, put on the inventory list, and then move forward.
Okay, great. So then at that time, if it becomes more of a public process, does NOAA drive that process or are there other voices involved?
I believe NOAA is the primary driver of that. I would be pretty certain, I wasn't involved in the Monterey and Channel Islands processes, but I would be fairly certain that they do a fair amount of outreach to other areas, agencies, organizations, to help them put together meetings, forums, outreach and whatnot.
And if it gets to that point, there's nothing to preclude that Morro Bay wouldn't be able to then step forward and do an alternative-type forum within that process? There's nothing that prohibits us from doing that at any time?
No, nothing that would prohibit the city from doing that.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you very much. So my question to you all then, discussion is, what I'm concerned about is, are we really credible as a city to invite individuals to an unbiased discussion because of our current policy and where we stand currently? So I think when the item of the CHUMASH National Heritage, wow, C-H-N-M-S, so much easier. When this opportunity came forward and it went before the Harbor Advisory Board, they were unanimous in their rejection of it. So that, to me, sounded like something that they're not interested in having in Morro Bay. And then when it came to council, we had decided not to change our policy on, currently not in support of it. So I guess what I'm struggling with is, are we really the right organization to be asking for people to come here and give, are we truly unbiased? And is this appropriate for us to take this role at this point, given our policy direction to this point? Inviting NOAA here was council-directed specifically because we hit a wall where we had realized, you know, the public needed to discuss this, the possibilities of a National Marine Sanctuary in our waters. We felt as though, my recollection of that conversation was, we felt as though we needed to give the opportunity to the public to voice their opinion on a broad variety of items. So we specifically did invite NOAA here to give a presentation. Based on that, we don't have anything currently in our goals that says we're going to, that we've prioritized this kind of a discussion moving forward, at least for the next year. I don't know, my other concern is, I'm not sure Morro Bay has to be the, you know, the very core center of all of the discussions. This is a broad and a miles and miles of land and sea would be encompassed in this if it becomes a reality. And I don't, I'm concerned that it always has to happen, everything has to happen in Morro Bay. I think it would be good to move these types of forums to other jurisdictions. So I'm a little nervous to move forward. It's, I'm not quite sure we could come up with a list that we could agree on even up here to invite. I mean, I think we were all 5-0 on inviting NOAA here and letting them, you know, speak to what their version of a National Marine Sanctuary is. It's another governmental agency. There's no one competing to do this, only they do it. So that, to me, felt like a comfortable decision. I'm not sure how we would structure this and how we would agree on an invite list. And if it isn't on our goals, I'm not sure I can feel comfortable asking staff to spend time on it when there are clearly other items in the harbor in particular that need our attention. And that, you know, we sat tonight earlier with the Harbor Advisory Board and went over some things we really want to work on there with them. This is something that is a little bit about, you know, a little bit outside our total control. And, you know, it may put us in this process or may not in the next year. So, you know, I really don't have a clear sense of what we should do. And I would say the thing that resonated me the most was what Mr. Alward said, is, he said, I don't know where, what the proper venue for this discussion is. And I would agree, I'm not sure either. So I'm not going to be able to, you know, wrap it up right now, but I'm open to hearing your opinions as well. Thanks.
Thanks. John?
Thanks to the Harbor Advisory Board for taking the time to have their Subcommittee evaluate and make this recommendation. I looked for a purpose statement throughout it and I didn't find one. The specific purpose, as I recall from the process that we went through as a city council when we invited NOAA, was that we were looking at a previous recommendation that had been made. And we were in the process of trying to evaluate whether we would support or not support the submission for inclusion on the inventory by the CHUMASH Sanctuary. And so there was a specific purpose behind that that I recall we were trying to achieve. That being said... That being said, I looked at the process now that the Chumash Sanctuary is, has been added to the inventory. And indeed, there are four steps, one of which is public review, that is step three, that appears to be very robust. And the other thing I'll say is that this isn't just about Morro Bay. This is a very broad-based sanctuary that has been stated a number of times that, that begins in Monterey and, outside of Monterey and goes all the way through to the Channel Islands. And so there are a number of other stakeholders that I believe need to be involved in consideration for hearing about this designation if decisions are going to be made. But bringing it back to this body, I don't think it's the time, the place, nor do we have the resources, nor have we prioritized it as a priority right now. And so to consider it now, I think is premature, not appropriate, not all-inclusive of the area. And there is an appropriate time where our consideration, I believe, can be discussed, and that's during the designation process, step three, which is titled "Public Review." Thank you.
Thanks, John. Noah?
Yeah, I agree with John and Christine on this one and would expect that if there is another forum or another group that wants to host a forum, that the list would be much more balanced than, than what I see here as far as representation of both sides. Because as I've learned during this process and trying to listen to people that support or oppose the sanctuary, whether they're within agriculture, fishing, the environmental, all the different sectors that we hear have, have an influence and could be affected by the sanctuary, I'll find someone that is equally as passionate about the benefits of the sanctuary as, as many as I'll find someone that's opposed to it. So I think it's, if there's gonna be a productive discussion about it, it needs to make sure that there's a balanced representation provided for that. And I think that'd be very challenging to do, actually. So at this point, I don't support going forward with another forum.
Thanks, Noah. I'll conclude with my comments as well. I came into this thinking, being open-minded in what a forum could look like, and primarily because there were some comments about my interaction with other officials, and primarily that was through the mayor's meeting. And one of the mayor's meeting in particular was, this was some time ago, being approached on, you know, "Hey, Jamie, we're getting contacted through the Chumash National Marine Sanctuary, coming to city council looking for endorsement." And, you know, hadn't had that type of approach. Obviously Fred and I had had contact, you know, years ago, but hadn't had that approach. So what they were, in the conversation, what they were looking for was, "What's Morro Bay gonna do? We're waiting to see what you're interested in doing." So with that, Jeremiah is sitting out in the audience, and I reached out to Fred Collins at the bridge that was being constructed. And not to get into too much of the storytelling, we basically arranged a meeting between Fred and NOAA and sat down and talked about differences and appreciated that getting together. But I think what I get out of this most of all in, in our past discussions at city council level and what we're, what we're having tonight is, the challenge for, well, first of all, I think it isn't solely specific to Morro Bay. I agree, this, this needs to be a broader discussion. But what I, what I get out of this most of all is, the nomination process changed. And I was looking at this some time ago when we were going through this, and the nomination, and I think Mr. Duros talked about this during his presentation, that it was more of a grassroots type of nomination process. I feel as though that that's really put city councils and communities asking, "Well, what do we do?" And there's just really not the information out there. So if anything, I feel as though maybe it's warranted crafting a letter to NOAA and their change in the nomination method and basically the strain that it's putting on this city and other cities in the county, wondering, "How do we get through this if we don't have all the information?" 'Cause that's what I get out of the discussions that we've had. So that part of it is done, but it certainly is worthwhile providing feedback in how we're getting information as a community to, to get through this. And I think it'd be valuable, especially as we go through, not just the nomination process, but the, what's the next step there? It's John right in front of you. But the designation process. So I, I'm not in agreement with going, going forward this. I would, I would go with my colleagues on this. Matt, I, I know you're, I understand you're supporting the HAB board, not that, I don't think any of us aren't supporting the HAB board on this recommendation, but I, I feel there's, you know, there's a longer timeline to get through this. But I would entertain, you know, some sort of conversation or something about sending a letter to NOAA or the appropriate body to discuss, "Hey, their nomination process should be revisited." And I, you know, I think it's just putting a strain on communities, you know, to be able to navigate through a really, really informidable process. 'Cause here we are, take, you know, discussing what would be a correct forum. So those are my comments and not supporting this. Yep, absolutely.
I understand the points you folks are making. But however, with this, given even the nomination process and with, I mean, we run a dangerous little tightrope if we go with, I mean, your suggestion, and I understand completely what you're saying, Jamie. But right now, as I understand the NOAA process and when the folks came and talked about this marine sanctuary, they're going out and testing the waters, no pun intended, and see where things are going. And so right now, what the HAB's suggestion is saying, they think that there are other perceptions or understanding about the marine sanctuaries, neither negative or positive, that could be heard within this in the initial stages, that then would influence the, the process as it's going forward in its inception, in its beginnings, thereby would be telling NOAA, "Hey, look, this isn't necessarily a slam dunk." That's why I would say being proactive, and I understand everybody's point of view here in terms of letting things go along, go through the process. But right now, the HAB's board, and I'm, and I'm supportive of it, is being proactive of this and letting NOAA know, "Hey, Morro Bay, in its regional concept," because if the marine sanctuary is coming down just below Cambridge, going down to Santa Barbara, Channel Islands, yes, there are a lot of other entities involved, but however, with the purview of Morro Bay and our harbor, we're kind of key to it and a lot of folks are looking to us for, if not leadership, but at least getting up and being proactive about getting this information. So that's what I think.
Okay. Thanks. Unless there's any other discussions in responses to Matt and where we wanna go on this, the only other card to throw out there is just sending a letter to other cities and letting them know that this was discussed and, you know, whether or not other cities are interested in having some sort of information forum out there. That's the only other thing, because I think it doesn't necessarily be solely on the, on the city of Morro Bay, and it is larger than Morro Bay. It needs to be discussed at a county level. Those are my only comments and just looking for closure on this. If there's no further discussion and no will to carry on any discussion, I just take a motion for direction on this.
What is the staff recommendation? Is there, why don't we revisit that for a moment? So if we take no action, then, or do we need to take action to close the item or other direction possible?
I think where I'd be is either alternative one or two. Both would come with caveats and recognize that we'd have to consider each option case by case if there was a proposal to be involved. So that's, that's where I'm at.
Alternate two?
I said alternate one or two, but I'd wanna retain the ability to consider any involvement on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Without any discussion, let's just make a motion for one of those alternates anyway.
Why don't you go ahead and make a motion for alternative one? Try-
I think, I think one, alternative one, I'll move alternative one. And that if staff or other council members identify or are aware of a, of an opportunity to be involved, that that be considered by the council on a case-by-case basis.
So I would second, oops. I could second that for discussion.
We have a motion by Mr. Smuckler, second by Councilmember Johnson. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0? Is that correct? Okay. Any further discussion on this item? Okay. With that, we'll close item C3 and we'll move on to item C4. All right. Here we go. Speaker slips. I got a question. Don't, don't say anything. Okay. All right, folks, we're moving on to item C4, which I'll be recusing myself and turning it over to Mayor Portem Makawetzky. I just have a question for our city attorney. At the last reading, I recused myself and spoke publicly. Could you explain your recommendation in my recusing myself and the secondary unit ordinance, or, excuse me, my secondary unit or property from the, the recommendation that came down?
I'm thinking of how to do that clearly.
Okay. I'm sorry, Joe. It was, it kinda struck me at the last minute before it came down here. Otherwise, I would've prepped you with that.
As the council knows, anytime you have a financial interest in some matter that's before the council, you have to accuse yourself. Figuring out whether or not a council member has a financial interest is very factual-based. And there's guidelines that the Fair Political Practices Commission has created in the FPPC guidelines. One of those guidelines, and, one of those guidelines deals with real property interests and if that's the, the financial interest that may be impacted by a decision. And there are, so clearly, Mayor, you have a financial interest in real property that's associated with this discussion. But there are exceptions to that requirement to have to accuse yourself. And one exception is, if 25% of the residential properties, because that's what we're talking about, 25% of the residential properties are affected in the same way that your property would be affected, then technically, you don't have to recuse yourself. And that was information that I gave you. However, that's dealing with the secondary units. This discussion of this ordinance deals with secondary units and guest houses. You also currently have a guest house application in the city. And so clearly, from my perspective, you need to recuse yourself from the discussion of guest houses. Because the integrated nature of this discussion, this ordinance, I couldn't figure out a way to be able to talk about, to have you sit on the desk and talk about guest, talk about secondary units and, and then leave when guest houses discussion came up. So my recommendation to you is just recuse yourself from the whole thing.
Thanks for clarifying that. And with that explanation, I'll recuse myself. That's all yours, Matt. Thank you.
All right, so here we go. We have the item C4, second reading and adoption of ordinance 601, local coastal program and zoning text amendment, amending Title 17 provisions related to secondary dwelling units and guest houses, quarters, and accessory living areas. And so right now, we want, we go to Scott.
Oh, thank you. So this is the second reading of ordinance 601. It is an LCP and zoning ordinance text amendment related to secondary dwelling units and guest houses. The, a little bit of the background, the first reading was held on March 22nd. At that meeting, we, the city council made two changes to the, to the proposed ordinance. One, removed the recommended prohibition on the use of secondary dwelling units as vacation rentals. Obviously, that's generated a lot of interest over the intervening couple of weeks since our last council meeting. And I'll speak to that more in a minute. And we also made some sort of minor modifications to language related to coastal, related to input received by the Coastal Commission on the permitting process and making sure that we had that outlined and defined correctly. So moving on to continued discussion on the, on the vacation rental piece. Our ordinance has allowed secondary dwelling units since 1995. And since 1995, you've been able to have them be vacation rentals. So changing the ordinance as the council did last, at the last, or the first reading, at the last meeting, basically just, you know, installed status quo. We're not making the change. Which is no different than the council's decision in 2014 when the ordinance was brought forward for your review. Council also approved the ordinance without any prohibition related to secondary dwelling units becoming vacation rentals. So again, status quo. Currently, in the city, we have about 163 licensed vacation rentals. We've received a contact from the coastal, excuse me, contact from the Coastal Commission on a couple of different, on a couple, couple of different occasions, requesting that we not ban secondary units as vacation rentals. So one of the, you know, one of the reasons that led into the, the change in staff's position on this issue. And other is, having them have the possibility of becoming vacation rentals does contribute TOT to the city, does improve the ability or affordability of, of homes in the city. It allows people to get into a market they might not otherwise be able to get into. Moving, continuing forward with the issue of affordability, again, secondary units can provide affordable, long-term rentals, units. Transient or long-term rentals of secondary dwelling units can improve, again, the affordability of, of homeownership. And in, in the intervening 20-plus years that we've had the, the ordinance in place, there hasn't really been any issues related to this. They have come forward, we only have five secondary dwelling units that are actually registered vacation rentals at this point, out of the 163. It's a two or three percent. So it's, it's not a substantial portion of the, of the housing stock that's registered as vacation rentals in the city. The stricken language there is the, is the language that had the vacation rental prohibition. It was titled "Prohibited Use as Vacation Rental," and it, in the language inside of it said, "The secondary dwelling unit should not be rented as a vacation rental. Public notice of each application for a secondary dwelling unit shall clearly state, within the description of the project, it may not be used as a vacation rental." So that was the language that was stricken by the council at the last meeting. We also struck language from the ordinance findings that were similarly related to the use of secondary dwelling units as vacation rentals. I'm not gonna read those. And then we provided some clarification related to input that we received from the Coastal Commission prior to the last meeting. And that really was just making sure we had it correctly defined, what the permitting process was for, for employing secondary dwelling units. They require approval of an administrative coastal development permit for those areas outside the appeal jurisdiction and a regular coastal development permit for those areas inside the appeal jurisdiction. Typically, a regular coastal development permit brings with it a requirement for a public hearing. But in this instance, consistent with state law, there is no hearing requirement for the regular CDP. That changes for guest houses and accessory living units because there is no state law that has that prohibition. And so you have the areas inside the coastal zone, but outside of the appeal jurisdiction where an administrative CDP is required. And then those areas inside the appeal jurisdiction, again, you need a regular CDP, but there will- again, you need a regular CDP, but there will be a public hearing associated with So yesterday, I think, we received input from Coastal Commission, again, requesting further clarification of our language in here. Really, it was related to lot coverage, and they asked that we add additional language that talked about it being, for lot coverage, the addition of a guest house or accessory living area is cumulatively counted towards the lot coverage requirement, and they wanted that both for the guest houses and secondary, and secondary dwelling units, and so that's what you see here. That's the language added in red. Really non-substantive, it would have already been considered that, it's just, that was explicit.
And if I just may add, the reason that Mr. Graham said it's not substantive is because, as you know, this is a second reading. If a substantive change was being made to the ordinance, you'd have to have a first reading again, but because this is basically just clarifying what the ordinance said and what its intent was, it's not a substantive change, so if you wanted to, you could do a second reading tonight.
Okay, and with that, I'm going to end my presentation there. The recommendation is to adopt ordinance 601, amending Title 17 related to secondary dwelling units and guest houses, and then directing staff to submit a local coastal program amendment to the Coastal Commission. If there are questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mayor Protim, instead of providing an intro to this one, I thought I'd let Skype go and then provide a after-tro. So, not sure what that's called. There's been a lot of confusion and discussion and interesting question on this topic in the last couple of weeks, so we thought doing this with two different voices might help, might not. So first, when we embarked on this four or six months ago, this was a fairly routine update to a 20-year-old ordinance, and that's essentially what we were doing, is taking a 20-year-old ordinance and making the appropriate tweaks to it after 20 years. Prohibiting secondary units to be used as vacation rentals would be a change to our current practice. That is, that's one of the reasons that staff changed our recommendation two weeks ago, sort of at the last minute, is because we were concerned about making a perhaps significant change to our current practice without a broader discussion on vacation rentals. And so prohibiting the use of, the use of secondary units as vacation rentals would be the change. What we're recommending, and you accepted two weeks ago, was to not do something new, but to continue to do what we've done. For over 20 years, I think Scott said this, for over 20 years, there have only been five secondary units that have been licensed as vacation rentals. So the scale of the, of whatever the problem is, is not significant. Over 20 years, five folks who have a vacation, who have a secondary unit have asked to have that license as a vacation rental. If that number was 50 or 500, I think it would be a completely different conversation. But, and thus, your comments two weeks ago sort of resonated with staff, also of perhaps the way to consider what we should do is have a broader discussion about vacation rentals in total, not vacation rentals in secondary units, which is a microcosm of the vacation rental question. I'll say that staff, planning staff, city hall staff, and police receive very few complaints about vacation rentals, any vacation rentals, much less the five vacation rentals that are in secondary units. We just, there may be some complaints, but they never, they rarely make it up to city staff, or make it to city staff. And finally, as Scott noted, two weeks ago, coastal staff actually reached out to us and expressed some concern with this new prohibition on vacation rentals and secondary units, from their perspective, and that was another reason that we changed our recommendation. Thank you.
All right, thanks. And with that, we'll open up for questions from council. Noah, do you want to start?
Sure, I do have one question. There has been discussion about going back to the language that was originally submitted. In that scenario where vacation rentals for the first time would be banned from secondary units, how could we fairly apply that to the people that have currently been licensed, those five or so in the city? Is there a possibility of grandfathering in existing licensed units?
Yes, there's the possibility. We could alter the language in the ordinance to allow that to happen, if that was desired. It would, again, require another first reading, and we'd have to, well, that would actually require a review by the Planning Commission, with the recommendation back to city council, because that's something that was not discussed in the past.
So what, the entire ordinance would have to go back to the Planning Commission, or just the grandfathering in process?
The grandfathering in process. I mean, it depends on how you want to do it. We could, we could move forward with the language as it's written now. You could make changes to it, which depending on what, if you just added that clause back in, I think we still have to go back for a first reading, then a second reading, and then we can ship it off to coastal, and you could give us direction to work on that grandfathering clause, and we could do that over time. We could do it as part of the zoning code update. I mean, there's, there's opportunities. The one, you know, the one sort of downside to not doing that is it's not an automatic thing, because what happens is, is we issue, reauthorize business licenses every year. The vacation rental permit is actually a business license for vacation rentals, and so we reissue those every year. And so after you adopt this, and we put it into play, and it becomes certified by the Coastal Commission, and we start using it, the next time one of those comes around, we would not be able to approve it. So.
Unless it fell under the category of illegal non-conforming use under the other provisions of the zoning code, which we'd have to look at to see how that would play out.
So that would be the grandfathered-in component?
That could be one way that it already would be grandfathered in, but we haven't looked at the language of that to see how that would play out if you were, if we tried to apply it to the secondary units.
Okay. If I could, you could also, I think, and I'll get corrected here perhaps, you could approve the second reading of the ordinance as it is, and then direct staff to go back to Planning Commission with this discussion about the prohibition on vacation rentals with an intent to grandfather in.
Yes, that's possible, but we may have a timing sequence issue, so you'd have to also say, and for right now, don't touch any of the currently, those five units. If they come back for another license, just give it to them.
Well, that, that's what we would do, because if you approved what is on the table right now, there's not a prohibition.
No, I meant to say.
Okay.
Okay, and then we'll probably have to get back into that a little bit during the discussion, but under the discussion last time, we did agree that we wanted to see a more holistic discussion about vacation rentals, and more specifically, we talked about affordable housing. So I guess what I'd like to hear from staff is, Mr. Buckingham, you talked about the vacation rental policy being something that we likely will need to develop in the future, that we don't currently have, and what I'd like to know is what's your sense of the process to get there is? We know we have quite a bit of burden and work items on the Planning Commission's program right now, so how would you see a vacation rental policy playing out as far as timing goes?
A couple things. So one, I would suggest this because I probably need it, but I think a broader discussion on the differences between affordable housing, workforce housing, and just a general lack of housing in the city and then the county might be, might be helpful. There's distinctions in each of those, in each of those terms, and that might be a good part of this discussion. So we've got a significant community engagement process on our plate right now, which is the code enforcement, code review. I think it would be wisest if we went through that for the three to six months that that's going to take, and then, and then started a affordable housing, workforce housing, vacation rental review, instead of trying to do both of those concurrently. Thankful that you, that you increased the FTE, but that didn't increase anybody that's working in the planning department, so they, we've, they've got a lot on their plate. So I, from, from, I think, I haven't talked with Scott in detail about this, but from our perspective, one of those projects at a time is probably, so that we can keep doing all the other things we need to do from general plan and basic building permits and coastal development permits and all those things, one project at a time is probably the best approach.
John, do you have any questions?
Sure, thank you.
Good point. This could also be a facet of the general plan. Probably, that's probably the best way to do it, that's part of the housing element of the general plan, and to specifically direct that, that we spend time and effort in all of that outreach that's going to happen anyway. That's, that's very wise, instead of doing a whole separate process out here to make this part of, make the vacation rental question part of the general plan process.
And are you saying, leave it like it is, was previously, and not change it? In other words?
No, I would, I would recommend, yeah, leave it as it is on the table right now. You approved a first reading two weeks ago, to approve that second reading, and then to give the staff guidance to, in the course of the general plan update, especially associated with the housing element, to focus a discussion on vacation rentals in Moro Bay, and their effect on affordable housing, workforce housing, and all of those things.
I need to add some clarification there. We're not updating the housing element.
Oh, right.
That doesn't, we don't start that, that doesn't need to be done until the next cycle, which is 2019. Literally, when we were done with the, I mean, we're going to roll right into it when we get done with the process of the current general plan update, and LCP update, and zoning code update, when we're done with that, the next thing we'll be working on, and that'll be going on the goals list, is the requirement that we have to update the housing element again. But it's not to say that we can't do housing element implementation and discussion through this, because the implementation of some of these things actually takes place in the zoning code. So it's, we already have a lot of policies that deal with affordable housing in our housing element, that's what it's for, and so doing the implementation piece of that is something that we can do as part of the general plan, LCP and zoning code update that we are currently underway with. Just wanted to make clarification, so everybody understands where we're, where we're going.
And so, maybe this is for Joe. If I look at Article II, Adoption of Regulations, California Code 65852.150, and read that, it says nothing about allowing second units to be used as vacation rentals or short-term rentals. The intent or purpose appears to be to provide housing for family members, students, the elderly, in-home healthcare providers, the disabled and others at below-market prices within existing neighborhoods. Are we violating the law?
No, we're not. That section that you're reading doesn't prohibit those secondary units being vacation rentals.
Do we not have a significant vacancy rate, or fair vacancy rate, almost on a daily basis in town, with regard to vacation, like hotel beds available? I mean, are we, how often are we full? Occasionally.
I mean, obviously during the peak season, you know, occupancy is much higher than it is during the off-season. We also have a lot of just vacant houses, period. We have, we have a lot of second homes in town. In fact, this whole discussion's been sort of interesting to listen to from the outside, interacting with, you know, folks in the public, because there's a perception that, well, we have all these vacation rentals, and they create a lot of problems. In fact, I've probably had more complaints about second homes, vacation homes, being used by people that were not using them in a manner that was respectful to the neighborhood, meaning they showed up, they had a lot of extended family or friends or whatever, and made a lot of, they were making a lot of noise, and, you know, that type of thing, and it wasn't actually vacation rentals, which is kind of interesting. Vacation rentals are at least posted and have the contact information for the folks that are responsible for running them on them, so maybe it's because the neighbors go and get that information, I don't know, and then they have a point of contact, I'm not sure, but you don't have one for your neighbor Joe, who, you know, lives in Fresno and rents, and has his brother-in-law and their family come over with a whole bunch of their friends. So, I don't know. I mean, it's just, I've, I've only been here for a little less than two years, and so, but that's what I've seen, so far.
I, that's discussion, I'll wait for discussion, thanks, Matt.
All right, Christine?
Thanks, sorry, my screen went dead. Sorry, I'm getting asked a lot of questions via my computer. Could you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was listening really intently, and I just lost track of where I was. I don't, but what if I, well, no, I do want to ask a question. There was one question that came up that I didn't have answered last time. So, this is the only question I have, I think. So, Mr. Graham, if we wanted to discuss vacation rentals in a holistic way, every single vacation rental, that could be done and fit into, in however way, you know, you make it happen policy-wise, into the general plan, local coastal plan update process?
It would, yeah, it would likely be at the end in the zoning code update that we're going to be likely moving forward with.
So G-PAC could take this on, and would they be specifically discussing this and be taking public input, and we'd have a community discussion about vacation rentals, all aspects of them? Would you, is that possible within this general plan update?
It is, yeah, it absolutely is. I mean, it's, right now, our vacation rental policies are not so much founded in the zoning ordinance.
Right, they're in the business license.
And that was because the city, I think, like many cities a while back, were not really so interested in dealing with the Coastal Commission on this issue, and so they put it in the area that dealt with business licensing components. Again, not uncommon for coastal cities because of the difficulty several years ago in working things out on, you know, on that level with the Coastal Commission.
But now Coastal Commission supports the availability of these units for vacation rental, it sounds like.
They do, but there, you know, you can't, when I was in Pismo, we tried to do, we tried to update our ordinance, and it had an outright ban in it, and they wouldn't accept that language change. But they were fine with, if you wanted to create separation between them, and so you can't have any vacation rental that's closer than 500 feet or 1,000 feet, they were fine with that, so.
Okay, so regulation is okay?
They're okay with limitations.
At this point. And then last, last question, it's a new question, thank you, Noah, for allowing me to ask it. What if we, at this point, said, all right, we're going to keep status quo with this particular ordinance, and we're not going to permit any more licensed vacation rentals for a particular amount of time, no matter where they are, whether there's an entire home to be used as such, or a secondary unit? How, what would be possible if we just froze the business license application for vacation rentals citywide?
You mean, we'd have to do a moratorium? Is that what you're talking about?
Is that the word? So we would not be permitting any, we wouldn't be processing any applications for new vacation rentals in the city of Moro Bay until we have completed the zoning code update, excuse me, through the general plan, local coastal plan update?
Yeah, I mean, that's, yes, yeah, we would have to come back with a, with a moratorium.
And when you say new, you mean not the ones that are coming in for renewal of their current license, you mean new new?
I mean, any vacation rental license that would push us beyond the 163 we have right now, including those five that are within the secondary units.
I mean, yeah, we could go through that, we could, I could, yes, we can do that. We could, with concurrence of at least three of you, we could bring something like that back.
We would, and it'd have to be unanimous decision. Because.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor Protim.
I'm not sure your mic is on.
It takes, it takes four, it takes four-fifths vote for that moratorium to be approved, and you approve it for a 45-day period, and then it would have to come back with a report, and then you could approve it for another 10 and a half months or something, I forget, another time period, and then you could bring it back and have it last a total of two years.
That was my question. Looking forward to discussion, thanks.
Okay, and so I have one, a couple. Okay, and so, I have one, a couple of questions also. In terms of, as you were saying, Scott, and I think Joe, you were saying, in terms of, if we went back to the ordinance of a couple of weeks ago before we changed it, in terms of, and Noah brought it up, in terms of locking in grandfathering these five second homes that are already, are being used as vacation rentals, would we, we could go back to the previous ordinance and put that wording into grandfather, is that what you said?
If we did that, we would have to go back to the planning commission to add that additional language in related to grandfather. Likely have to go back. I agree with Joe on that. We have to look back through the ordinance a little bit, but because most of our policies are found in that business section, and that's a weird place to have your uses located, and always makes me a little uncomfortable then trying to tie it to other sections. But again, haven't really done the evaluation of that, it's just extemporaneous thought. So, yeah, we have to go back to planning commission and then get the recommendation to bring it back to you for that, so there'd be a delay involved.
Good, okay, because the previous planning commission before our last meeting was to do away with vacation rentals as, and secondary units, correct?
It's not, it's not the prohibition or not prohibition of vacation rentals that you have to go back to the planning commission for, it's the grandfathering part.
No, my question was, at that planning commission, they had recommended not to allow vacation rentals in secondary units.
You're correct, that's, that's.
Okay, that's what it was, and it came to us, we altered it a bit, and that's where we're at, the second reading of our alteration. But to go back to, if we were talking, hearing what everybody's saying, if we had gone back to, if we go to that and say, we do want a ban on vacation rentals and secondary units, but we want, we would want to see those five current units being used as vacation rentals grandfathered in, we'd have to go back to, okay, got it. Okay, that's all my questions. So, we want to open that up to public comment. The first public comment is Rich Bukke.
I was one of the last slips submitted. Good evening, Mayor Protam and Council. Rich Bukke, Morro Bay. First of all, I want to apologize for the shabbiness of my email that was sent to you. As you noticed on the bottom, I had some notes that I failed to delete before I sent it to you, so. The ordinance before you tonight on second reading, first of all, there's an old saying, no good deed goes unpunished. The ordinance before you tonight on second reading was originally intended solely to address language that was deemed noncompliant with state regs. That's all it was supposed to be. That's all, nothing more. Unfortunately, we are in an election year, and the issue of vacation rentals has now become, and you play in the contentious game of political football. I would ask you tonight to reaffirm your vote from last meeting and approve the modified ordinance. If any, if you're considering changing your vote from last meeting, I would like to offer some alternatives. My first suggestion is that there would need to be a study, would be, if there needs to be a study of our citywide vacation rentals, then let's do it in conjunction with the general plan update, as we're doing with other hot button items. Let GPAC take a look at it with lots of public input. Then it will go to the planning commission, and finally, back to council for ratification. If you don't agree with this, then consider this one. At the last two meetings, council was greeted with a large and vocal group of residents regarding the parking of boats and RVs. The result from that is a study group with staff and affected residents now underway that will take from six months to a year to rewrite the existing parking ordinances. This is happening despite the fact that currently they are all in violation of our current codes for parking. I do applaud council for taking this healing action for our community in regards to the parking. However, I want to point out that the five vacation rentals, 3% of the 163 in secondary dwelling units are current legal. We have business licenses, we pay TOT. Shouldn't council afford us the same courtesy of a complete study and analysis? Finally, if my first two ideas don't fly, then please consider allowing the 516 units to remain and make it a provision only for new projects. I firmly believe that to rule out a very small subset of vacation rentals would be capricious and possibly illegal. For example, I have two single-family dwellings on either side of my house. They could both be current, they could both become vacation rentals, and then I would not be allowed to have a vacation rental. That doesn't seem fair. On the issue of affordable housing, taking away one resident's ability, me, to live affordably in order to provide another with an affordable place to live, it's not who we are as a resident in Morro Bay. To conclude, I've read the email submitted in opposition to vacation rentals in general. When Diana and I decided to open our vacation rental, we asked around and found that the freestanding, non-owner-occupied properties generated the most negative comments. We let people know that we live on site, clearly send the message that they're coming to our house to party, we don't want them. We strive to be good neighbors. To clarify the misconception on one of the emails about parking, we are required to have off-street parking and as part of our licensing permit. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Bob Taft. And the next speaker is David Nelson.
Good evening. My name is Bob Taft. I'm the current chairman of the planning commission, but I'm speaking here tonight as a private citizen, and these are simply my opinions. Two weeks ago, the council asked the planning commission to take a look at the issue of affordable housing and to come up with some thoughts on how we could facilitate that. And I'm really glad that you did, because it's an important issue. I think housing affordability is a quality-of-life issue, and the availability of workforce housing is certainly a major economic issue. And Morro Bay is kind of a unique place in terms of promoting housing affordability, but one thing is very apparent, secondary dwelling units are going to be an important component of any valid, workable program to promote affordability. It's true, we only have five now, but there are forces at work which are going to increase that number. Airbnb, the growing popularity of the central coast in general as a tourist destination, and the financial return that you get from vacation rentals versus long-term rentals. So, this is a coming problem. Not only that, you have a chance to deal with it now. Once you have 20, or 30, or 40 of these in town, the genie's going to be out of the bottle, and you're going to lose your discretion in terms of regulating it. So, this is the time. And you've all agreed that this needs more discussion. You've all agree, you know, this is not something that should be crafted with a sledgehammer, it should be crafted carefully. Maybe there are areas in town where vacation, where secondary units should be vacation rentals, but maybe there are other areas where they shouldn't be. Maybe there should be a certain distance between them, maybe there should be density standards, maybe there should be regulations as to whether the primary unit and the secondary unit can be rented as a vacation rental at the same time. These issues need to be addressed, and it doesn't make sense to continue to issue permits when they haven't been addressed. So, whether you go, so I urge you to go with what was the recommendation that was previously submitted by the planning commission, but a moratorium would be another way to go, but let's not, let's not just continue with a carte blanche policy that says anything goes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right.
Hi, David Nelson, Morro Bay. It seems like there's a grasp on what the state mandated for these secondary units. I remember when it came in and there was other people up there, but these aren't meant to be vacation rentals, and I don't care how you read it, the law was pretty specific on why we needed to have secondary units all over town. You know, when we, when we take things out of here that says that you can't have these as paid units, it's right in our zoning laws already, and just icing over, and, you know, it's easier to say I'm sorry than to ask for permission, is what we're talking about here with the five units that are already in violation, clearly, of our code. Because if you go to section Exhibit A on page three, letter H, it specifically says that no separate rentals, it says right there, you can't charge for these rentals. So, how are we going to do this? I mean, I'm not against vacation rentals of single-family second homes, if we see that that's the way we should go, but for, to take these secondary units off the market of, you know, for family or what the intended purpose was for low-income people that can't afford housing. I mean, I have relatives that are in their eighties, I'd love to have a granny unit, and I'll call it a granny unit because that's what they were supposed to be. They're supposed to be for compassionate housing of your family or friends or whatever, but we're not, to turn this town into, for rent by owner is a mistake, using this mechanism. And I suggest you just go back and just reset this and let the general plan be adjusted accordingly. I live in a neighborhood where we're up on hills, and, you know, I know that there's been problems with vacation rentals up in our neighborhood. Maybe they haven't been reported to the police, but people who live there can tell you stories, and I know you have letters from people that have stories. And like you say, I'm not against vacation rentals, but to subvert the purpose of these units into rental units is wrong. I mean, I'm on an R1 lot, I expect an R1 neighborhood, you know, it's as simple as that. I mean, we were forced to take these secondary units on these R1 lots that are not big enough to support a second unit, in my opinion. And to go around and redo this and change words to just leave loopholes so people can come in and fight about this is ridiculous. It's much, it's much better to just do it right, the way we had it in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next is Barbara Dour, and last is Dorothy Cutter.
Barbara Dour, resident, wants a vacation renter on weekends and weeks and whatever. I would suggest tonight that you go back to the, and adopt the planning commission's 601, their version of the ordinance, and based on your discussion tonight, you actually could keep this prohibition on second unit, second dwelling unit vacation rentals, thereby protecting affordable housing by adopting 601 as presented to you. But you could then grandfather in the five existing units and protect us in the future from having more second dwelling units for vacation rentals and not affordable housing or for grannies. And you could go on with your major study on vacation rentals, whether they're just an individual home or a second dwelling, and you can come back and you could change and eliminate the prohibition you adopt tonight, or you could provide other prohibitions or free up the world of vacation rentals. I'm going to have to call my neighbor sadly and tell him what's happening. Even though I'm opposed to vacation rentals, I'm going to have an Airbnb next to me, and I assure you, my complaints will not go to the police chief or the police department or the city. I'll call my wonderful neighbor who is in this situation where that's what he wants to do with his house, and I will call him to complain and let him know what's happening. Basically, I'll let the court system say the way I feel about it. The court recognized that residential character of a neighborhood is threatened when a significant number of residences are occupied not by permanent residents but by a stream of short-term visitors. Such rentals undoubtedly affect the essential character of a neighborhood and the stability of a community, because those, such visitors have little interest in the public agencies or in the welfare of the citizenry of this community. And then, from my point of view, what about Megan's Act, Megan's Law? I mean, who are these people coming into our neighborhoods? We're really happy when our grandson and his friends play on the street. I mean, this is a business opportunity, it's a commercial endeavor. Send it over to the business community. Zone more land for hotels, motels, visitor-serving in our coastal area. Separate it, regulate it, police it, but let us have our friendly, wonderful neighborhoods we came to Morro Bay for. We lived in an area for a while, visiting at my, okay, let's get, support your experienced planning staff and your planning commission and members of the public who spoke on this issue. Prohibit the use of secondary dwelling units for vacation rentals. Refer it back to the planning commission you have. Work it out, get a plan. I watched through all their meetings, and I watched through some of yours. They did a great job, good interaction. Thank you very much for your time, and I have sympathy.
Thank you, Barbara. Dorothy, you're up next.
Okay, when California mandated that all cities had to allow granny units that you now call secondary units, the intent of the law was low-cost housing for senior citizens and the like. To pervert the law and now allow these units to be vacation rentals is a betrayal, since you do not have a policy or regulations for vacation rentals. By allowing two units on our small, single-family zone lots, you are intruding, and it should be for a good reason and not a money-making scheme for homeowners. Okay, I sent you a copy of Mammoth Lakes ordinance, and they require people to be 62 or older to live in their secondary units. Okay, the planning commission voted against making second units vacation rentals, and the original staff report was also against this. What is the point of having the planning commission vote if you don't listen to them? Doing this at this time sets a very bad precedent. If you will not discuss the whole subject of vacation rentals and regulations, then you should not be voting on this now. Now, I know you've received eight letters that oppose this change, and only one letter in favor, which was for somebody who had a vacation rental. Whenever I ask the city, when is the city going to deal with our zoning ordinance, which has had a bad effect, adverse effect on a lot of our neighborhoods, the answer I get is that it cannot be done in a piecemeal fashion and will be done when the general plan is implemented. Why the exception now? Secondary units, guesthouses, and changes in our zoning code should all be done at the same time. Okay, and I sent you a copy of the intent of the California mandate that Mr. Heding referred to, but I'd like to read it again, because I think it's really important. It says, "The legislature finds and declares that second units are a valuable form of housing in California. Second units provide housing for family members, students, the elderly, and in-home healthcare providers." So, I think that you should not be making secondary units vacation rentals. Thank you. And I'd like to have this in the record.
Thank you very much. And with that, that concludes public comment. We're going to bring it back for discussion. All right, with that, Christine, you want to start us off?
Sure. You know, we're actually all saying the same thing, all of us, and I know it doesn't sound like that to you, but what I hear you say is what I think I'm communicating, but clearly not communicating quite as clearly as I could be. I agree that it should all be done at the same time. We should look at vacation rentals holistically at one time, and it's a perfect time, because we're doing the general plan, local coastal plan update, along with then the subsequent zoning update. That's already done, we're budgeting for it, it's moving forward. We have general plan advisory committee of citizens, we're ready to go. They're dying to tackle this, they want to talk about it. You all want to talk about it, everyone wants to talk about it. What we're doing, what our decision was two weeks ago, is to just status quo on the policy that has been in place since 1995, I think, is that the right date?
That's correct.
There's been, yes, that's right. So, this council is not all of a sudden allowing willy-nilly everybody with a secondary unit to, you know, hang up a shingle. We're not. It's been allowed for over 20 years. We've slid into culturally a phenomenon that we never could have foreseen 20 years ago, and that is the ability to rent anything on the internet, including someone's back, you know, back room, or an entire little unit, or a large home. That's all possible here for us to do in Morro Bay. But my personal opinion is that we're right at the perfect time where we should be. We have exactly, we know how many licensed units we have, 163. So, we're at a point where I don't believe that every neighborhood is adversely impacted at this point. I have four around me, literally next door to me, around me. I have four around me, literally next door to me, around me. And one has just turned into a full-time rental. The folks were no longer interested in doing a vacation rental. It's very difficult to do a vacation rental in many cases. It's slightly easier probably to do a long-term rental. But one house just transitioned Thursday. So now I have permanent neighbors where I didn't before. And they are, you know, moved from someplace else in Morro Bay because the owner of their unit wanted to live in it. So I understand completely that that's an available house now for full-time residents who live and work in Morro Bay. I understand. I just want us to follow a process that makes sense and uses our time effectively and efficiently for input from the public as well as our staff. So we're ready to go and have this discussion in a holistic way and figure out exactly what kind of use do we want, if we want it at all, to rent someone's home in the city. Maybe we don't want any of it. Maybe we want it in particular places. Maybe we want to, you know, pick and choose. But that's for all of us to discuss as a community. And this discussion's been taking place in two weeks. So when this was sent back to staff a year and a half ago, this wasn't even an issue. No one brought it up. No one came and spoke. And that's really, truly prior to Airbnb. Airbnb has really changed the way we do things. Uber has changed the way we look at things. So these are phenomenons that all of a sudden now a city has to adjust to, and cities take a little longer to adjust than the rest of society. But we're getting there and we're at the perfect place to talk about it. So I'm not disagreeing with any of you that affordable housing is important or that these secondary units are key affordable housing opportunities. I'm not saying that. I'm also not thinking that we're not breaking the law, but we've slid into this ability to do so. And to all of a sudden prohibit it when we didn't even outreach those five people who currently have that in the -- currently, five people have the ability to have like a licensed vacation rental, and they have a license, so they know that they're legit. We didn't even send them a postcard or a phone call to say, hey, planning commission is about to send a council a prohibition to something that you're currently licensed to do. When we did that about the parklet, we heard from many of the same people who were here tonight to say, what are you doing? You just put that parklet down. You didn't talk to anybody. So five people, and we didn't even outreach to them. So I'm just trying to figure out what's the right process, what gives the greatest number of people the ability to discuss this item. And I'm comfortable standing by my vote two weeks ago that we keep status quo, move it forward, direct it specifically into the general plan and local coastal plan update, make sure that it gets the attention it deserves, and then I'm willing to talk about a moratorium because what I'm responding to, and it's legitimate, there's fear in the community about us becoming overrun. And I live in ground zero of having vacation rentals, so I have some experience there. But I'm trying to balance the needs for us to follow proper process and, as you say, many of you, you know, do it all at the same time, have a cohesive policy. These are things I've learned that make sense in my time up here. So I'm yearning to do that. I'm hoping to get your support on that in the long run, follow it through the process of the GP-LCP update, and willing to entertain a prohibition or a moratorium on any new licenses. So we hold the line until we've had a full and inclusive discussion in our community. So that's where I was more or less two weeks ago. I'm firmer there now that we need to do it right and we need to have a policy that we all understand and can stand behind and has inclusive discussion. So, thanks.
All right, John?
Yes?
You're up.
I voted no last time. I haven't changed my mind. I believe that the regulations that are very clear to me are that these secondary units are designed as eloquently outlined by Dorothy, to be used as second units, providing housing for family members, students, elderly, in-home health care providers, the disabled and others at below-market prices within existing neighborhoods, not for vacation rentals. We have hoteliers that have empty rooms. We are going to damage our hoteliers, which will have an economic impact if we take their ability to fill their rooms away by allowing these secondary units to be used as quote-unquote "vacation rentals," in my opinion. Thusly, I am against it. I believe that we should not punish those that already have the license, so to speak, and that if there's an opportunity to grandfather those folks in, that's fine and dandy. And I also do agree with Christine that further discussion needs to take place. I don't think there's going to be a mass rush of individuals coming to town because we're building these second units and renting them out as vacation rentals. However, if you look at our trends with regard to TOT, they're up rather dramatically, which means more people are coming to town looking for these kinds of rentals, et cetera. And so, given that, I could support a moratorium, a grandfathering, but at this point, not a recognition of secondary dwellings as vacation rentals, just as I stated last week. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, John. Noah?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to ask staff a quick question about going forward because I'd like to hear staff's perspective on what you think is the cleanest way to approach this if we want to try to hold the line or limit the potential of more units being converted as we're trying to have the discussion, knowing that things are hard to put back in the box. Approving what we have now and then a subsequent moratorium in the interim on any additionals, talking about secondary units, till we can have that discussion? Or would adjust our language back to the planning commission with a grandfathered-in element? Which one of those two makes more sense to you?
I think we could do either. The moratorium thing is, means we have to keep coming back here to the council, as Joe described, and so that may not be the best way to do it. So we could go back to the planning commission. We could put the grandfathering clause into it. I actually don't think that would take much work. And then bring that back forward with everything else, you know, to council with a recommendation, first reading, second reading, send it to coastal. And then we're not doing the, you know, keep coming back to you to, you know, push the moratorium further down the road. And Joe, you said we can do it up to two years? Yeah. So we would be doing that several times, coming back for you and reauthorizing the moratorium several times. And so, removing that, I'd rather spend a couple more weeks putting the grandfathering clause in there.
So hearing that, I'm in support of going in that direction. Going into our meeting two weeks ago, I was, and I still do think that primary use of secondary units is for affordable housing. That's the intent, clearly. I think legally, we have the discretion, and historically, we've allowed them. So I don't think it's fair to the people that have followed the rules and got themselves licensed to, at this point, tell them that they can no longer do that. So I do support the grandfathered-in approach. I assume that as we talk about the bigger picture of affordable housing and also specifically vacation rental policies, that if they're, within that discussion, it's determined that there could be components of secondary units or areas where secondary units could be reasonably rented out as vacation rentals, that we could adjust the policy, readjust it at that time. What would be your response to that? Say, we go through this process to look at the, you know, the holistic picture of vacation rentals and within that discussion, identify areas or a component where a secondary unit could be permissible.
Okay, so a couple things in relation to that. So right now, the way the policy is, and I don't know, Whitney and I were talking about this earlier today, I don't think currently we have any, but right now, you could actually have a vacation rental being the primary and secondary unit. So if we go through the process and just prohibit them for the secondary unit for the reasons that were discussed here this evening, the primary unit could still be one. So later, having discussions later on down the road about what we're doing about vacation rentals, are we going to put the, you know, a distance between them or something? Yeah, that's totally acceptable, and that's a pretty common implementation tool so you don't end up with three and four right next to you, Councilmember Johnson. So, and that's something that I've seen in many different jurisdictions. That's a very common 500, 1,000 feet between them, whatever, what have you. That's a pretty common thing that comes out of them. I see it repeatedly.
So we'd be able to make those adjustments down the road?
Absolutely. As part of the larger discussion, right, related to vacation rentals that we would be having in the more holistic, you know, process that we're undergoing with the general plan, LCP zoning code update.
Okay. Well, given that, I will support the planning commission's original recommendation with an effort to grandfather in the existing licensed programs and make sure that we're initiating the discussion of the vacation rental policy on a bigger scale, the more cumulative or holistic approach to that.
All right. All right. So and with that, the whole notion of affordable housing, and I think it's a double entendre because as you were telling us, you're showing us, Scott, with the existing ordinance, I think AB 1866, was it?
I think AB 1866.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, AB 1866 was the legislation that precipitated in 2003 the --
And so looking at that, the affordable housing is key. And then looking, you know, I think the larger component here is the idea of vacation rentals. And I think that's the big elephant in the room when we're talking about this because the five houses being used, the secondary units being used as vacation rentals, that's not big, but however, the other 158, and then how that would go on down the road, that's the more problematic view of this. But with that, I'm with Noah and John. I think going back to the original planning commission's recommendation and then going to work into the grandfather of the five units that are currently following the rules, I think with that and looking ahead, I think that would be the, I'd be in support of that. Until, Christine, you have some comments?
Just really quickly. So yes, I would agree with all of you on that. I could easily move forward with that. What if the, if the use changes and if the ownership changes in a grandfathered secondary unit, do they get to keep that use? Do they sell that use with the house?
Open for discussion, but typically, the use is run with the land, so we would be permitting them. So you're going to be looking at, now, we have this, our vacation rental policy sits in the chapter for business licenses, and we'd be moving some of that discussion into the zoning code where we run into the existing grandfather clauses that are in there. So I would say that those are probably run with the land because we'd be acknowledging them.
Okay, great. Yes, thanks. And then the last question?
Yeah, unless you did the opposite of it.
Okay. So that's a discussion that can be had, but I would like that discussion to be had at the planning commission. I think it's a subtlety that may come back for us to struggle with another time. My question, though, is I agree that we're handling the secondary unit ordinance well at this discussion. I appreciate that. But my question is, so we're not addressing the concern that I've heard about any old house, a single-family home turning over for sale, you know, a new owner, and that immediately becomes a vacation rental. I have seen that in my neighborhood. I could, frequently, and that's what we're also hearing from the public. Now, I understand a moratorium is a pain, but are you talking about coming back 45 days, then coming back how frequently? Every 45 days for two years? Or can I just have a little more information? Because I still think we're not addressing that concern. If it takes three years to get to the zoning or two years, we're still going to have a number of homes in the community sell and go into vacation rentals, and then we have a larger problem than what we have today.
Clarification, please? Are you talking about single-family homes?
Yes.
Not secondary attached units?
Well, you heard how confusing it was.
That's different, is it not? That's just clarification for my point.
It's confusing, but moratorium on new vacation rental licenses for any home is my question.
If I could jump in here, I think, Christine, what, I think, is this what you're saying? The moratorium, what you're saying, would slow down the entire process for both secondary units and vacation rentals, thereby limiting or bringing it into the purview of the city and neighborhoods to control both with the same stone? Is that essentially what you're saying?
It sounds like we're stopping them moving forward in the secondary units by the action we've taken here tonight, potentially, if we were voting on this. So then that, I guess that wouldn't fall into it. But my concern is continuing to allow, I'm talking about a vacation rental business license prohibition.
No, I understand. I think you have, there's two things. You're trying to combine them.
I think John asked the question.
Yes, and I think you did, John. But however, well, that opens up another can of worms here. Do we just stay with the secondary unit thing and move forward with it? And then, Scott, in terms of being on the agenda, I don't know how this, the vacation, the larger vacation rental concept can be put on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, pretend --
Either moratorium or going ahead with it.
Well, so -- May I get an answer to my question from Mr. Panoni, please?
Sure.
Sorry. Which question was it? Sorry.
Does the existing policy, does the existing language before us pertain to the single-family home that somebody turns into a vacation rental?
No.
That is a totally separate issue.
The language before you is only dealing with secondary units.
And if we want to put that on the agenda for a future item, we could do that.
Yes.
I understand, I totally understand that. My question was, when I asked the question initially, I got a particular response from staff, and I just wanted them to clarify exactly how long the process would take to, if we were to discuss that at a future date, I would like that, if you don't mind repeating the answer, of what would a moratorium look like?
You can do it two ways. One is to hold a public hearing before you adopt any moratorium. And if you do that, then in 45 days, you would have an ordinance brought back to you that you could then extend for a total of two years. If you don't have a public hearing when you adopt the ordinance, when you adopt the moratorium, in 45 days, you have to hold a public hearing, can extend it 10 and 1/2 months, I think it is, and then after that, you could extend it another year. So it'll come to you three times to get the full two years if you don't do the first step with a public hearing. If you do the first step with a public hearing, then it's two times.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. John, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Noah, you had mentioned before that, do you want to reiterate kind of what you said in terms of support? Or is discussion done? Would you like to make a motion?
I can make a motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I'll move that we not approve the second reading as written tonight and instead direct staff to bring forward the original planning commission recommendation as presented last meeting and include a component that grandfathers in existing licensed vacation rentals in secondary units. And I'm going to end that, and then I'll make another motion about, I guess, the vacation rental policy if necessary, but I'm not sure we even --
I second it.
Bring it to the planning commission.
Planning commission, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, with that, okay, planning commission. Okay, second. And so, any discussion about that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries for zero. Noah, you want to make another motion?
Yeah, I just want to hear from staff. I think our last meeting and the future agenda item we put on the agenda was about --
Mr. Vice Mayor, if now you're going to discuss the general idea of vacation rentals, the mayor can come back.
Okay. Well, it's mostly about, do we need to clarify our intent and wish that the planning commission talk about the bigger picture of vacation rentals and start a process that way?
The mayor can come back for that discussion.
Let's do that.
All right, everybody. Close your eyes and click your heels together. Here he comes back. All right. Okay. All right. And with that, the mayor's back in the office.
So just so I'm clear, we're still on the same agenda item, but in the context of vacation rentals? That's within the scope of the agenda item for discussion?
Single-family homes.
Your discussion now is focused only on what you want to do with regard to the general vacation rental policy.
So maybe a future agenda item would be a best place to talk about that?
It would be, it could go either way, but that would probably be the cleanest.
Okay, let's do that, then. We like to be clean.
I just need clarity since I'm coming back. So we're talking about a secondary unit, are we under the context of secondary unit ordinance?
No.
So we're, but we've got it. We're not --
That's done. The thing you had to recuse yourselves for is done.
So we're not, we're discussing something that's not on the agenda or we're under future agenda items?
It was related because it was vacation rental.
Okay.
So we could have done it, but the council wants to bring it back. So the three of you saying you're going to bring it back is going to come back.
Okay, good. All right, thanks. Beautiful.
Did you have a timeframe, Mr. Wayne, you wanted to come back?
Mayor Ernst, could we test the public and see who's here for C5? Because I have a feeling most are here for C6.
Okay. Thank you for that. Who in the audience, do we have speaker slips for the atlas two? It'll give us an idea. So we have, that's C4, two for C5?
It is important that we do this.
None? Okay. Okay, thank you, so moving on.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate what Mr. Smucker is requesting. It's important that you know that C5 is a time-sensitive, so if you choose to do C6 first, which is fine, you should also choose to go past 11 o'clock at least to do C5, because it is time-sensitive. Otherwise, you could choose to do C5 and not go past 11 and not do C6.
Okay, let's, C5 is good, I think we're good to go. Okay, great. Item C5, authorization of response to alleged violation of the Ralph M. Brown Act regarding staff presentation written revised conditions of approval to be, to the planning commission during its October 6, 2015 public meeting, and not having made copies of those conditions available to the public before or during that meeting. This is city attorney presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. There's no PowerPoint.
You can bring the next one up.
So as you know, the Brown Act is a very technical law, and there's many steps and hoops that you have to go through, all with the great idea of making sure that the public is always aware of what the council's doing and what the public entity is thinking about. One of the requirements that the Brown Act has is if you get a document the night of a meeting, that same document needs to be made available to the public at the same meeting. No matter how much discussion you have about that item, and how much vetting you have of that item, technically, even if all the public talked about that item, if the thing, if that piece of paper wasn't made available, that's technically a violation of the Brown Act. You received a complaint, a, what's technically called a cease and desist letter, because, as the mayor said at the October 6 planning commission meeting, a revised staff report was given to the planning commission, it was fully vetted, it was even vetted, I think, with a PowerPoint, but it was fully vetted, but that piece of paper wasn't provided to the public. You received a complaint and a cease and desist letter. That cease and desist letter is part of a process that the Brown Act has to allow a city to avoid litigation that could result when a, even a technical violation of the Brown Act occurs. And that process says, the letter has to come in, and then you have the opportunity to send a letter back to the person who sent you the letter, basically saying, this is what you said we did, without admitting any fault as to whether or not we violated the Brown Act, we promise not to do that ever again. And then there's some other language that goes in the letter. What was presented to you in the staff report is what I just said, and a draft of the letter then, that has to be reviewed by the council at a public meeting, not at a consent item, but on a public agenda item, a discussion item, and then the mayor has to sign it if the council wants to approve the letter. So the intent, again, for the council doing this is to avoid litigation, because if you don't do this letter, and the person who filed the cease and desist letter wanted to, she could go to court, and my estimation is the court would probably say there was a technical violation, and you could end up paying not only my attorney's fees, but her attorney's fees. So my recommendation is that you review this letter, you hear from the public, and you authorize the mayor to sign this letter.
Okay. Okay, great, any questions for staff? Left or right? None? We have Barbara Dorr, public comment on this item?
Barbara Dorr, I think the Brown Act, you might want to turn the light on, thank you. Brown Act is a very special law, and very important to government, and bringing the sunshine in and knowing what government is doing, and you all talk about the importance of letting the public know in public hearings and getting public involvement, and the Brown Act is critical. As far as I'm concerned, I disagree, I don't think there's any little technicality, the fact that a document that's presented to the city council is not in our hands to look at. People may have, be hard of hearing, people may not, they just may have difficulties, and we're entitled to the same documentation that you have. And I want to thank Linda Steggi. I think I've met her once, I've seen emails, I wouldn't recognize her in a room, but I want to thank her very much for doing this, and making sure that our city is the best city, that we, that we pride ourselves on following the Brown Act in every technicality. I mean, when I started going to some of your closed sessions before you all were there, there was no public comment, there were no minutes, there was almost nothing, and that has changed, and they're now having an agenda item that follows the Brown Act, is not, no longer in violation of our state laws, but it takes someone to stand up, to complain, and it takes, it takes someone to be brave. I sent you all a letter once, because I didn't like a secret vote you had with button pushing, but I didn't take it as far, forcing some kind of a potential lawsuit, but it's just critical, and there are no technicalities, it's just very important that it be followed. And I hope you all thank Linda for sending this to you and helping you, so some other nasty person doesn't come along and sue you and cost us all a lot of money, and it's just important, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
I want to go home.
And with that, we'll bring it back to council for discussion or remarks.
Ms. Franch, just want to make sure the record's clear. It was, it wasn't the city council that this happened at, it was this planning commission. The city council has a process where if you get those documents, they end up back on that table back there. Your city clerk does a good job of making sure that that happens, and I'm guessing that that probably may have been the first time, if maybe that the only time that happened with the planning commission, because there's other times when that same thing happens with the planning commission. So that's, I want to make sure that it's clear that the public understands, this wasn't a rampant thing that the city's been doing for a long time, it was one event that happened. And I appreciate also the fact that we were, that someone complained, so we are sure that for the future, we'll never have that, whether it's technical or not, we'll never have that violation again.
Mr. Panoni's correct, that is how it typically happens. The additional information's placed at the back of the room. In this instance, we actually had copies for the public, they just weren't put out.
Thanks, Scott. Discussion? Discussion? Great, I did have some, did have some remarks on that as well, because I think even Barbara spoke to that. Great to have the safeguards in place that our public can go through the process to initiate a complaint, and then not necessarily force the city, but allow the city to recognize, hey, maybe there was a mistake, there was nothing, at least from this perspective, that there was any mal-intent, it was just simply something oversight, and we got reminded, we're talking about it publicly, transparently, so, you know, I appreciate doing that. And there we go. Okay, so just a motion to go ahead and approve the letter.
Motion as shown on the staff report.
We'd, I'd make a motion to accept staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Irons, second by Dr. Heading. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? None, motion carries 5-0. Great, moving on to item C6. Water reclamation facility, 60-day pause. Let's see, I've got an addendum on this. Mr. Buckingham, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is your 30-day update during your 60-day pause. The purpose of this is to provide the city council, as directed by the council on March the 8th, a brief update on staff actions conducted to date during the ongoing 60-day pause on WRF site selection. A very brief background, for three years, the city has been moving decisively forward in a community-driven process to build a new water reclamation facility to replace our aging wastewater treatment plant. Last year, some, or, yeah, late last year, some concerns arose with our previously determined preferred site at Rancho Calina. Focus at that time then turned to our primary alternative, the Righetti site. On March the 8th of this year, the council directed a 60-day pause and directed that the staff provides you a 30-day update on the tasks that you assigned at that 60-day pause. Here is that update. You directed that we send out a WRF newsletter, the WRF newsletter was sent out, as in the staff report, most have seen it, it was sent to all Morro Bay mailboxes, to post office boxes in Morro Bay, and to out-of-town property owners. You also directed that we conduct two community-wide open houses. Those were conducted this past week on a Thursday night, and then on Sunday afternoon. Those went very well, and the staff stayed until questions were exhausted at both of those. You directed that we conduct two informational outreaches at the farmer's market, we completed one last weekend on Saturday, and we have a second informational outreach scheduled for the farmer's market at Spencer's this Thursday. You directed that we consider some visits to WRFs in the, fairly close in California that use similar technology, SBR, MBR, to the technology that we are likely going to use to observe those, and we intend to do that between the 18th and the 28th of April. You also directed the mayor, on your behalf, to begin outreach to the Cayuga Sanitary District with an interest to seeing if that relationship could be repaired to the point that a, that joint future facility could be considered. On your behalf, the mayor contacted Supervisor Gibson, and then sent the letter, which you have seen to the Cayuga Sanitary District Board, recommending some mediation, and that the two boards begin to work more closely together in general, and specifically on disposition of the existing wastewater treatment plant, and perhaps on a future joint facility. You also recommended or directed staff to reexamine the Chevron and the Tri-W sites. Staff reexamined the assumptions and the research data associated with both of those sites. No changes have occurred that make these sites more attractive now than they were two years ago when they were studied and rejected. Locating a new WRF at either of those sites will increase project costs in the $10 to $15 million range, resulting in a $120 to $180 annual increase for most Morro Bay water and sewer rate payers. Based on the community goal of cost-effective reuse, staff is not planning to expend additional resources to further study the Chevron or the Tri-W sites unless you otherwise direct. Based on the significant increase, my words, significant, 10% to 15% increase in cost, that doesn't jive with the goal of cost-effective reuse, so we are not planning to do further research on those sites unless you direct us to expend those resources. Finally, you asked us to look, to keep our eye open for other Moro Valley sites. Staff looked for other Moro Valley sites not previously identified or fully researched. Three sites were identified. One of those three sites appears to have quite promising potential as a preferred WRF location. The site is under the Williamson Act, which is an ag preservation contract. Should the city be able to negotiate that obstacle, the obstacle that it is under the Williamson Act contract, this site compares quite well to both Rancho Calina and Righetti. The site is in the Moro Valley, it's across highway from 41 from Rancho Calina, it's 150 acres, of which 19 acres are very flat and imminently buildable. We are completing fatal flaws analysis on that site, so that you are ready to make a, so that hopefully, you may have a choice to choose that at your May 10 council meeting. The next steps are for us to conduct the informal outreach at the farmer's market this Thursday, to complete a couple of WRF site visits, up to four different facilities we're looking at, to focus effort to determine by May the 10th if the quote "new Moro Valley" site that I just described has any fatal flaws, to update the WRF CAC on May the 3, and then to bring, come to the council for direction and decision on May the 10th. And that concludes the 30-day pause update during the 60-day pause.
Sorry, I was taking notes, pardon me. Any questions for staff to my right?
Just briefly, how much is the additional newly emerged property for sale for?
Around...
Thank you.
John? How many acres, did you say, Dave?
It's 150 acres, of which 130 are quite hilly, and 20 are beautifully flat.
Thank you.
There's, wasn't intending to go into too much detail, happy to, there are some, there are some slightly increased costs, slightly lower costs, bottom line, it compares very favorably to both Rancho Calina and Righetti.
Matt? Christine?
Speaking of that, following up on the Moro Valley site, the additional site, have we done neighbor outreach there?
It started today, will continue tomorrow, and end next week.
Okay, and then, will we, any idea of what will be on the WRF CAC agenda? Are they going to be asked to make recommendations, or is it just an update for them? Just wondering about that.
I believe that you want the staff to bring you an update and possible decision on May the 10th. That's what, I think that's a fair assessment of the direction we received. You want to be prepared to make a decision on Righetti or Rancho Calina, or a new site on May the 10th. Based on that, what we'll present, something very similar to the WRF CAC on May the 3, that allows, provides them the opportunity to comment and to provide recommendations on discussion and/or decision.
Any further questions? Seeing none, I'll forego questions and move right into public comment. And then Tina Metzger.
Bob, Bob Keller, Morro Bay, yeah, first up, I, excuse me, I end at last. I have concerns for all of Morro Bay.
Hey, Bob, sorry, maybe you can reset the clock, he's going to run into 11 o'clock anyway, maybe you can reset it, we'll just go ahead and take the motion to go beyond 11 o'clock, or I'll make a motion to go beyond 11 o'clock, and we'll see how it goes. Say, okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries 4-1. Bob, thanks very much, maybe we could reset the clock?
Okay, Bob Keller, Morro Bay. I have concerns for all these citizens of Morro Bay, the people that don't want this in their neighborhood, and also the ones that are concerned about costs. Our first priority was the Righetti property, because I think the only fatal flaw we really have right now is the compatibility of our neighbors. We would, we're trying to work with them, I think we need communication to work together on this thing. We're trying to make it as compatible as possible visually, environmentally, cost-wise, and et cetera, et cetera, but anyway, but I did hear that we have another property in consideration across Rancho Calina. I don't know what the fatal flaws are there yet, but smaller, more hillier property, maybe we have flat land to build on, but I think we have some infrastructure to take care of, like, there's a creek going through the property, I believe, maybe a bridge that has to be built, I'm not sure what the cost of that is going to be, or how much more cost is going to cost us versus the Righetti property. Anyway, another thing, timeline is a factor, because we have 30 days left to make a decision, and we need to get a site as soon as possible. I still feel Righetti is the best option, because it has more things that we can do with it. We can build it so it's compatible to our neighbors, make it conservative shift for the rest of the land for the time being, if there's any problems with that. But I'm open to both properties right now, so we should give it... But I'm open to both properties right now, so we should give it both consideration. Let's see if I have anything else that I want to put into it right now since I still have time. Anyway, I think communication, too. We have to talk this out the best possibly we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Tina Metzger?
That's it. Good evening, Mayor. Honorable members of the City Council, I'm Tina Metzger, Nutmeg Avenue. It'd be good if everyone stated where they live in town. We've heard a lot from the previous speaker, and I don't know whether he's ever revealed where he lives, and that would have a lot to do with the point of view of the speaker. And that's a typical thing you do at a council meeting. You state your name and where you live. So if the council could request that from speakers?
Sure.
I agree with council member headings -- I agree with council member heading on the condition of our streets issue. Ironwood and Avalon are crumbling, and they have been for years. Why are we using our limited city money to purchase 250 acres when we really only need eight acres to do what we need to do? I think it's your responsibility to live within our means. Has the city talked with the Tri-W owner? Or is that just sort of an ignored issue now? Why did it take a month to reach out to the Cayucus Sanitary District with the mayor's April 7 letter? Why was the April 5 water reclamation facility citizen advisory committee meeting canceled? You lost our trust back in February. You don't seem to be listening to us. You don't seem to be responsive, and you don't seem to respect us and our interests. Our area town is going to be bearing the highest burden of the Righetti property.
I'm going to have to ask you to conclude, Tina.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So that concludes our public comment, and we'll come back to City Council for -- Barbara.
I'm submitted one.
Okay, Barbara.
Something about that.
All right, Barbara, public comment.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Are there anybody else for public comment?
It sounds like, first of all, I thought this was maybe a waste, taking the 60-day timeout, my husband and I, but it sounds like it's done some really good things. It's found an alternate site along Highway 41 that would take, could potentially, take the site, the water reclamation facility, away from the residential and move it a little bit further away. And I think that's great, and if that, you know, if that's even close to a possibility, that'd be wonderful for the people who are affected. On the flyer that you sent out, I mean, it was beautiful, comprehensive, and for those who haven't followed much, it was really informative. But those who really may be affected in nearby neighborhoods, the way it noticed the farmer's market meetings and where you could work, so where you could find out about what was happening, in the depth of the document, it talked about tonight's meeting and the May 10 meeting, but yet, on the front of the flyer, farmer's market, another place, and there was a big white space, and you could have had those two meetings before the city council, because I think people feel better if they talk directly to their representatives, where they feel they can have some impact. So I would have liked to have seen tonight's meeting and the May 10 meeting, as long as it went out to everybody. And it was hard to know what the additional cost for a couple of those sites, 10% to 15% more. I didn't notice any specific dollar amounts when I read through the flyer, and I think that was lacking. It should have had, you know, we know it's going to be a big bill, but it should have been in there, even though it's not pleasant. But I think the best thing that came out of your 60-day hold on this is that there might be an improved site for the treatment plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. With that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. There's a list of questions. I mean, I think maybe staff might be able to answer some of those. I think there was one about the WRF CAC meeting. I'll answer the one about why did it take a month? Has the city talked to the Tri-W April, the April 5 WRF CAC meeting? Say again? Yeah, okay, I've got that one. So I think the one was, have we talked to the Tri-W folks was one question, and then the WRF CAC meeting canceled April 5? Just to respond to those.
No, have not talked to either Tri-W or Chevron. As I noted, don't intend to expend any more effort on those unless the council says that a 10% to 15% increase, $10 to $15 million more expensive facility is something that you want us to countenance. I'm just trying to manage staff resources and whether it's available or not, the increased cost is substantial. So even if it were free, even if the property were free, the increased cost of getting there and getting back would be $10 to $15 million.
Okay, thanks.
And on the WRF CAC meeting, staff consulted with the WRF CAC. Based on the pause, they knew what items that the council had directed the staff to do. They did not have any -- there was nothing to update the WRF CAC on at that point, and the chair of the WRF CAC and others agreed that having a WRF CAC meeting to not have anything to update was not something that we needed to do, that they wanted to do, and we're committed to taking the, when we do have information now, to go to the WRF CAC on May the 3rd.
Okay, thanks. And then the, why did it take a month for the letter to CSD? I'll take the hit on that. Actually, I reached out to Supervisor Gibson the very next morning after following the meeting, along with just getting in contact, and our trip to Washington, D.C. for the dredging just delayed my focus, so I'll take responsibility on the delay on that.
Kind of curious, so what was Supervisor Gibson's response? Because we had talked specifically about, in his position, he seems perfectly suited to actually assist with some dialogue. I think the word was convener, and I was optimistic that he could help us with that because we're in the midst of a pretty emotional and important project for both of our communities, and so our relationship isn't very good, and it seemed like Mr. Gibson could probably help, you know, steer us through at least a conversation or achieve some mediation or something along those lines. So how did he respond when you reached out to him?
Interesting question, and somewhat loaded, but I'll respond the best I can. So you did talk to him about reaching out to Cayucus. You know, to a certain extent, Supervisor Gibson's always been very open and receptive to any phone calls, probably anybody on council, always willing to accept calls and help. I think generally, the message is we should be able to reach out ourselves, and I think I put it in my own words, I think we should be adult enough to reach out to the Cayucus Service District, the CSD, which is part of that letter. I did reach out by phone to President Enns and left a message. I didn't get a returned phone call, and, you know, I would, I am open to reaching out any way I can, but so the extent of the outreach right now is through written letter, and we're waiting for any kind of call or return message that way. Okay? Okay, all right. Any other questions from council?
Could I just?
I just want, there's a couple of things, though.
I thought you just asked us if we needed anything else.
Yeah, go ahead. I'll follow up on.
So just want to make sure when this comes back to us that we have at least a more detailed profile of each of those options. You know, we heard some questions during the recent workshops. Barbara Dorr was just commenting that, you know, the flyer is great for that upper-level review of where we are, but we did ask for, you know, a detailed presentation, not basically repackaging some of the existing information and giving us at least the basics of, well, why does it, why is it 10% to 15% more expensive to go to Tri-W or Chevron to see those numbers? I know Mr. Nunley's heard that, and he's planning on doing that, but I just want to confirm because I think that would help us all as we look at these options to, just as we did in the other rankings, to really clearly see what, where our best choices are. We've heard comments about living within our means, and I think that's been driving all of our decisions so far, and that would go along with that as well. It would help illustrate with a financial component of each of these and the benefits and cons of each site.
Yes, we intend to, for each of those four sites, lay out sort of the pros and the cons in a clearer fashion than is done in the flyer, but again, I'm trying to be careful with resources and with staff time, and unless the council is interested in a 10% to 15% more expensive site, I don't intend to spend the resources to go investigate with property owners and research, you know, and get super-precise estimates and numbers. So we'll be at planning figures, but not at a superfine, you know, level of detail.
Yeah, that's understood, but in a table format to lay it out.
Absolutely.
So that's, you know, it's understandable, related back to the study and analysis that we've done so far.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Hey, Dave, I do have a question in terms of the 60-day hiatus. We're 30 days into it. We're going to have one more meeting at farmer's market this week. In the next 30 days, are we going to have more mailings going out? It's kind of going with the, no, are we going to send these figures that you were just talking about? Are we going to have another? What are we going to do with this final 30 days? Because then we have a WRF CAC, what did you say, April, I mean, May 5?
May the 3rd.
May the 3rd. So do you have, do you have a rough idea of things that we're going to do besides WRF CAC and putting together these figures in the 30 days?
So we, based on the participation and the two outreaches that we did, we, my assessment is that those were sufficient to meet the need. There was about 30 to 35 folks at the, who were not staff or council members or consultants or WRF CAC members at the Thursday evening one. Sunday afternoon, it was more in the 15 range. The one on Thursday went from 6:00 to 9:30. The one on Sunday went for two and a half hours, and that was two and a half hours till the last person walked out of the room. It was essentially over, questions were complete fairly quickly, actually, the public questions. My assessment is that, is that most of the questions have been answered, probably all of the significant questions have been answered. In fact, much of what we heard were not questions learning about pros and cons of a site, but almost questions advocating for one site or against another site. So I would, and then we'll, we have another outreach on, as I said, on Thursday. I don't intend to do any more of those. I think the questions have been answered. Staff needs some time now. What I really want to focus on is this other site and to determine if it is feasible or not. And I should tell you that that site will, is planning to come off the market on the 1st of June, so we will likely not have the opportunity to delay a decision. So we really want, the staff is working, we're drilling holes out there tomorrow to do the geotechnical fatal flaws. I would like to focus our effort on that. We know, otherwise, we know what we know about the other four sites.
Okay. Okay. I just have a couple of comments for Ms. Metzger. There's three things I think weren't responding to. Lost trust, not listening, and no respect, and by not responding to your comments wouldn't be respectful. So the lost trust, I sense that that was from our initial meeting in the February, you know, some of the workshop meetings and how things were noticed. I think we, as a council, have been responding to many different ways and how we can handle that. So I don't think our, at least from my view, our efforts have not been thought out, and I guess that goes to not listening. We have a lot of listening to do from many in the community. I think I personally hear your neighborhood from Nutmeg loud and clear, and I think part of that is you would like to hear a no from this council. Part of the diligence from this council or any council would be the responsibility from, you know, to the city as a whole, and I think the 60-day pause is making that effort. So I, you know, I apologize, you know, when I hear those words, lost trust, not listening, no respect, you know, I hear that and I have to respond to that, so I hope you take those words and the action of the boards on how and staff are working through that kindly because it's not easy. We are trying to look after the city holistically, and I think we're trying to do the best we can through that. So I just had to respond to that in case there are any other comments as far as direction. It was great to have the update. Okay, thank you. And with that, we'll move on to item C-7, adoption of ordinance number 602, amending section 3.22.120 of the Morro Bay Municipal Code to increase the number of members on the Citizen Oversight Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Really quickly, this is the second reading of the ordinance to have the Finance Committee members increased to seven.
Great. We have no public comment for that. I would make a motion unless, and then take discussion, I would make a motion to approve ordinance number 602 and waive all further readings. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you. And that puts us to future agenda items.
The discussion on the vacation rental policy.
The discussion on single-family home vacation rental policy.
More, it would be even broader. It'd be a comprehensive vacation rental policy. Process forward and.
So we want to, we want to come back for discussion, a vacation rental policy that affects holistically vacation rentals throughout the town. Basically, general discussion that, and then we can, that's what I heard from the audio back there, that would, we would be able to frame and discuss what our options are.
In process.
In process. Is that?
Well, yeah, I want to, yeah, I suppose, maybe my thought is a little different, and I should express it then at this point. I'd like to, I honestly think we'll have that discussion moving forward through the general plan and local coastal plan zoning update, but I would like to consider in the future a moratorium on new. a moratorium on new business licenses for those vacation rentals. And I, does that differ from what I hear you saying? I don't want to go into the whole discussion right now because I think we're going to have it naturally in General Plan, Local Coastal Plan, zoning update. But I'm, that's, I'm trying to figure out what it is. I want...
Can I make one suggestion? Thanks. I think, you know, from some of the statistics that we heard, I think one of them was that we have, there's five, and I could speak to this. There was five secondary units that were vacation rentals, which we just found out about. Perhaps we can come back with information on how many vacation rentals we've had. Is it growing? Is it flat? And then go from there. I mean, we, we're trying to discuss whether or not, were you talking about moratorium? And I'm not sure that, is it a growing trend? Is it a decreasing trend? And would that, and if that, if it was flat, would we want to just go through a vacation rental process versus, versus going through a moratorium? Those are my questions.
Noah, I want to hear what you have to say.
I thought that we were satisfied with the process that was happening, that was occurring with secondary dwellings and the former granny units, or whatever we're calling them now. And that was moving along, and that whole process. We wanted to add on an agenda item to include single-family homes that are being rented out as vacation rentals. And you said the word comprehensive, a comprehensive review of perhaps a policy that would be inclusive of those, where we stand, what the current policy is, if there is one. And I never heard moratorium, but...
We discussed moratorium, I think, during the discussion item. But I understand where you're going, and I could support that. But I just want to make sure that's, we're not going to, wow.
Mr. Buckingham?
Did you want to reply?
I think he might have some help for us.
I'd love to try. I think from the staff perspective, there's a significant difference in level of effort between a holistic review of vacation rentals or even a slightly less holistic review of vacation rentals and single-family homes and a moratorium in order to allow that discussion to happen through the General Plan, Local Coastal Plan process. So if you're, I believe what I heard Councilmember Johnson saying is, let's push the pause button via a moratorium so that the discussion that you two gentlemen are suggesting can take time to happen through the General Plan update process. That's where I think you might be. What I would also might recommend is that you simply do a smaller package and direct staff to come back so you can have an idea what the scope of the problem is or isn't. I'm wondering if we are, if we have a solution that's in search of a problem.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so let's, so I believe the number is about 3% of our housing stock. Is, actually, it's less than that. But under 3% is vacation rentals. Perhaps if we came back with just a few numbers for you on what the number is and whether it's growing substantially, or whether it's pretty stable, will help you know whether you want to do a moratorium or front-loaded discussion or something like that.
I'll make a comment that the planning, Dr. Tev, Planning Commissioner, made, and that's this. We have the opportunity to establish policy that will allow us to prevent a potential problem from occurring that may well occur in the future, which he indicated had occurred in other areas. Now, he wasn't referring to this specific item. He was referring to the existing policy on secondary dwellings, so.
So what I'd like to see come back is basically all three items. Information about the process forward and kind of an upper-level review of all those three things you just mentioned, Mr. Buckingham, so that we, when we have that conversation, we can look at a snapshot of kind of existing conditions, decide whether we want to go forward with the policy, and likely that would be through the General Plan. But what that, what does that look like? And then the moratorium component, what would that look like? And then we can, you know, take steps from that one staff report.
That's doable without huge staff effort in the next eight weeks or so.
Perfect.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, any further? Seeing none. We'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.